Welcome to the regular meeting of the Madera City Council, special meeting of Madera Public Financing Authority Board, and special meeting of the Madera City Council as a center agency to the former Madera redevelopment agency. This meeting is being held today, Wednesday, the 4th, uh, 2021. It is now 6:00 P.M. This meeting will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order, which suspends certain requirements of the ROP and Brown Act. The city council meeting will be live streamed on the city's website at www.madera.gov/lock. Members of the public may participate in the meeting remotely through an electronic meeting via phone by dialing 669-900-6833. Enter ID 95974770395, hashtag followed by star nine on your phone to speak. Comments will also be accepted via email at citycouncilpubliccomment@madera.gov or by regular mail, 205 West Fourth Street, Jerk, California, 93637. Alicia, would you please call roll?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Viegas?
I'm here.
Councilmember Gallegos?
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Councilmember Montes?
Here.
And Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you all please rise for the invocation led by Imam Zia Rahman of the Madera Islamic Center?
All prayers belong to the Lord of the universe, the most merciful, the most compassionate. It's my honor, I feel honored to be with you, the city of Madera and the team. I'm going to begin my prayer, my invocation and supplication with our prophet, the supplication of our prophet Abraham, when he made this supplication. Oh, Lord, make this city peaceful and secure and provide its people with fruits, blessing, unity, and strength. I ask the God Almighty to give our mayor and his team the ability to serve the community and wisdom to work for the prosperous of Madera. I mean, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, would you remain standing, please, uh, to, um, to do the pledge of allegiance? Keith, would you do us the honor of leading us in the pledge of allegiance?
Okay, I think I'm unmuted. Anyway, I said it would be a pleasure. Everybody salute, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag. And I just went blank. I just went blank. We can hear you. No, I know. I personally went blank with my memory.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
One nation under God, justice for all.
And, and I apologize for screwing that up so badly.
That's all right, brother. It's okay. Uh, we've all had our moments. Uh, thank you very much, Iman, and also Keith for, for leading us in the invocation. It's an honor and privilege to have you here with us today. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right. All right, uh, we will now move on to the approval of the agenda. Alicia, I believe you have an announcement?
Mayor, I'll make that announcement at, uh, pub, I'm sorry, at concept calendar. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any public comment, um, on the agenda at this time?
If we can go back to the approval of the agenda, Mayor?
Mm-hmm. I'll ask my colleagues for the approval of the agenda or motion.
I assume to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve the agenda by Councilwoman, um, Gallegos, seconded by, um, Councilmember Viegas. Alicia, would you call roll?
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Viegas?
Yeah.
And Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously with six yes votes and zero no votes.
Thank you very much, Alicia. Uh, we move on now to a public comment. The first fifteen minutes of the meeting are reserved for members of the public to address the council on items which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be asked but are not required to identify themselves and state the subject of their comments. If the subject is an item on the agenda, the mayor has the option of asking the speaker to hold a comment until that item is called. Comments on items listed as a public hearing on the agenda should be held until the hearing is open. The council is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda, and no adverse conclusion should be drawn if the council does not respond to public comment at this time. Do we have any public comment at this?
Uh, Mayor, looks, one moment.
Do we have any emails or any?
We do have. Um, is my mic working? Okay, Mayor? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. So I have received a few emails, um, but it does look like we have a caller on the line. Would you like to take the caller or the emails first?
Um, let's take the caller.
Okay, I see a caller, um, phone call and phone number ending 6590.
Hello, Mayor and, uh, council members. This is Rico Saldivar from the prospective cannabis business, Mainstream Medicinal. I just wanted to call and say thank you to everybody that, uh...
Mayor, uh, you might want to remind that person that that's going to be on a specific agenda item.
Uh, yeah, thank you. No doubt. Uh, yes, caller, if you're going to be discussing cannabis, we have it on the agenda, and you please make your comments during, when we open up that, uh, agenda item.
And, and there's another person with her hand up.
Hello? Ish, Ish?
Hello. Uh, so hi, everyone. My name is Ishabanez. Um, I was raised here, brought up here. I'm currently a second year student at UC Berkeley, about to move away from home, which will be the toughest. But I grew up in this community of Madera, went to elementary, middle, and high school here, became senior class president, and I've seen the downs and lows we've been through together. And I became more and more involved, and I'm now standing here, or sitting here actually, to bring forth a few more positive suggestions. I wanted to talk about how global issues impact our small-knit community here in Madera. There are so many things going around the globe in different parts of the world, and in no means is one less than another. I want to talk about the ongoing farmers' protests happening in India for the past eight months now. Farmers, men and women, all over India, varied in generations, have marched to the capital to peacefully protest laws that had been placed against any consent and against the well-being of farmer lifestyles. During the march, they've been met with blockades, tear gas, water cannons, while the government literally ripped through highways and dug trenches in order to stop the march. These laws take away the minimum support price promised to farmers they would get in exchange to their harvest. The laws are deregulating crop pricing, leaving local farmers at the mercy of large corporations who are not worthy of trust. It's the same thing as, we could say, minimum wage not existing anymore. Companies can pay their employees as little as $2 per hour, and employees would have no say. You all might be thinking, why should we care, sitting on the other side of the world? We are global citizens. Many of us sitting here have origins outside of the United States. What happens back home matters. What happens here matters. We should especially feel the significance because our community is known for its agricultural aspects. In fact, the whole state of California is. Many of the communities have shown their solidarity with the simple proclamation of support. We here are all about voicing our, or our voice having a certain power. In the world's largest democracy, voices are being shot down by what they call their elite power. Even the media has nothing to say. You, you don't have to be a farmer to support these protests because we will raise our voices where we can. All I am asking for is a piece of paper signed by the council officials that mentions that we stand in solidarity with the farmers. This alone will bring such a sense of belonging within our Sikh, Punjabi, and Indian community here. This really helps to show that our city officials see and they do care. As a member of this community, I'm asking for this to be an informational item on the next agenda to receive feedback from the community. I have contacted other organizations to, to support and back us up with the process from answering any questions and concerns to actually sitting down and writing a simple proclamation with the intent of community building. In hopes that the council would create this as an action item to work with Jakarta Movement and community members in Madera to write this proclamation, I have verbal agreements from these groups. Now, I would like to give personal appreciation to all of you for listening to me this evening and sparking your insights about these voices that are speaking to us from across the oceans. I will be passionate with following up with the city manager and city clerk in order to share the contacts that I have gained that will support us in this initiative, and we're absolutely willing to assist in all efforts and move forth accordingly. Thank you once again.
Thank you very much for that. Uh, do we have another caller, Alicia?
One minute here. Um... Yes, we have a caller. Oh, I'm sorry. Actually, yes, they're, they keep moving around here. Um, phone number ending 2139. Caller ending in the phone number 2139. You may unmute yourself.
Hello. Yes, I just wanted to know why the council's not meeting in person. Um, the governor has opened everything up, and no other government agencies are meeting in person. I don't understand why the council refuses to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, uh, Councilmember Montes or Gallegos, do you have your hand raised? We're in public comment right now. Is that a no?
Yeah, we have somebody, uh, here in the chamber that wants to make a public comment if you guys want to come to the front. Okay, good evening. All right, I'll make this brief. My name is Nathan Brown. I'm an immigration lawyer in Fresno. Um, my family's been farming here in California since the 1870s, and I just wanted to introduce myself here in Madera. I'm going to be running for Congress as a Republican in the 16th district. Um, and again, I'll, I'll make this brief. I just wanted to introduce myself, and I look forward to hearing about all your hard work and the concerns of people here in the city of Madera. So, thank you.
Uh, sir?
Yes.
Could you, I just wanted to inform you that our meetings are closed to the public. We have not opened them up, uh, to the public, and so we are only conducting these meetings via Zoom. And so I just wanted to inform you that, uh, for the future, uh, for future reference.
Understood. Thank you for the clarification.
It's okay. It's all right. Thank you very much for, uh, for your comments. Okay, Alicia, if we can come back to, I believe you said that we have some, um, emails?
We do, Mayor. Um, the first one is from Kirkatanian. "I'm writing this letter to say it should not be the mayor and city council positioned to promote a candidate for District 5. I have been hearing a lot of talk about how they want their person in that seat to vote the way they do. Candidates should come in with an open mind and vote their own way." This second public comment is from Akram Kasim. "Honorable Mayor, City Councilmember, City Manager and Staff, I would like to thank all of you for your continued effort and hard work. There has not been enough recognition for the achievements of our elected officials and city employees. We're nearly two years deep now into this COVID-19 situation, but Madera has stood strong. Our city officials have managed to keep this amazing city, city running at full speed despite a wide-scale pandemic. What's even more important is that the budget has been balanced for the past three years now and has stayed balanced despite the pandemic. Our businesses have been taken care of, our people have been protected and represented. City employees have kept their jobs and have done them exceptionally, and our town is continuously growing. Thank you very much. Your hard work, hard work does not go unrecognized. On top of everything, all of this was achieved through Zoom meetings and video calls. However, we are still in the eye of the storm. This pandemic is out of the, is out of the picture yet. Despite vaccinations, the virus is still being spread even by vaccinated people. The Delta variant is extremely alarming, and we need to actively continue to take precautions during these times. Just yesterday, the in-person city council meeting in Almonte, California was canceled due to positive COVID-19 results within staff and police department. I urge all of you to please continue the council meetings through Zoom. I understand there is frustration with the meetings not being in person, but this is a means to an end. Every small precaution we take is still a step forward." And I have received a few more, um, just a few minutes ago. This is from Gabriel Hernandez. "Good evening, everyone. I wish I could address you as mayor and councilwoman, but due to your lack of respect for your constituents, I will only address you as Santos and Anita. As the two of you continue to push to keep the doors closed at City Hall, yet gallivant through the community for photo ops is incredibly disgusting and a slap in the face to the people whose door you or paid door knockers knocked on and promised you wouldn't do what's best for this community is complete hypocrisy. For example, you Santos and Anita were present in person, both in, in outdoors at the presentation of a new home to a hard-working while deserving family. And since you and Anita missed the last council meeting, you didn't seem to be bothered by meeting in person when you celebrated Juneteenth or a new ag office, or the other day when you were both at an indoor birthday party, or the other day when you were both at Madera Ford passing out 400 backpacks, or the other day when you both joined Senator Caballero for an in-person visit with Caballero regarding the San Joaquin River. This includes also Artemio, or the other day when you both participated in a food drive at Pan Am Park. Let's be honest, the public can easily see that you Santos brought these two on board simply for their votes. For example, when Artemio thanked you at his council meeting for all of your election assistance. What a disgrace to this community, the three of you are, and in particular, you, Mayor. You were sworn to protect and defend this community for enemies foreign and domestic, but it seems like you Santos brought them to the party for the purpose of having their votes. Santos, though you are technically prohibited from addressing questions in public comment, you have the free will to state whatever you want in your council report. So ans, please answer, why are these doors to city halls closed based on the advice of the public health officer in almost every other city in the state being open? And that would complete, um, the public comment this evening.
Thank you very much, Alicia. We will now move on. We will close public comment. Um, we will now move on to a presentation on the NG Summer Internship Program. I believe, Arnaldo, you have this item?
I sure do. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Um, my name is Arnaldo Rodriguez. I serve as the city manager. Uh, council may recall about a year and a half ago when the council adopted an approximately $19 million project, um, commonly referred to as the NG Project. That was a partnership between the city of Madera and NG to, to, to reduce the city's reliance on non-renewable energy. As part of that, uh, the $19 million project, 76% of those funds were allocated specifically for solar. And that's what, that's one of the reasons that there's a lot more solar, um, facilities peppered throughout the community. Uh, the remaining 24% went, went to update, uh, HVAC systems in city facilities and lighting, et cetera. Well, not only that, as part of that, the city requested that NG provide paid internships for City of Madera, uh, youth. And, um, during, uh, we attempted to do this two summers ago. Unfortunately, that's, that was at the peak of the pandemic. Until this past summer, when NG reached back out and we talked about, uh, attempting to do a, a summer internship program, we agreed that the best, uh, format to, um, to execute that would simply be online. And so with that, I do have several City of Madera residents that participated in the youth program. And again, the purpose of this was to, to, um, to have our Madera youth be engaged in different green efforts, in different sustainability efforts. And, and with that, we do have, um, the group here, and they'll be providing, um, a presentation to council in, in terms of some of their efforts for this summer. And I believe, um, you will be sharing your screen, and I'll turn it over to the group if that's okay. And I'm not too sure who from the group will be taking the lead. Whoever it is, you can unmute yourself.
Uh, I believe you're muted right now, speaker?
Um, I'm just going to share my screen right now.
Okay.
And I let the lens off.
All right, so let me know when you're ready, Suad.
I'm ready.
All right, so, good evening, everyone. My name is Belen Gonzalez. I would like to start off by thanking Mr. Rodriguez for giving us, the Madera interns, the opportunity to speak at this meeting about our recent experience as multi-city interns for Go Green Initiative's five-week multi-city internship funded by NG. We really appreciate it, and I would also like to thank Ms. Lewis for all the help she gave us in preparation for this presentation. So to begin, again, my name is Belen Gonzalez. I am 18 years old, and I will be attending UC Berkeley this fall.
Hello, my name is Fatima Gonzalez, and I attend Madera High School, and I am 17 years old.
Hello, everyone. My name is Alize Aleho. I'm going to be a senior at Madera South High School, and I have 17 years old.
Hello, my name's Suataha. I'm a rising sophomore at Madera High School. I'm 15 years old.
All right, so now that we all have introduced ourselves, I'll pass it on to Madera intern Alize, who will be thanking some important individuals who helped us throughout our internship experience.
Thank you, Belen, and today I'm going to be talking about who our internship couldn't do without. NG is a global energy service group that operates in three kids, key business sectors of low-carbon electricity. They also work with schools to implement recycling programs. Then we had our team managers Jill Buck, Mahogany Smith, Cassie Herrera, and Mallory McGough, who helped us lead every day on what needed to be done. We also had our senior interns Nathaniel and Luana that helped us today to get everything that we needed done. Now passing it off to Madera intern Suad, who will be discussing how the internship started and what the main focus is.
All right, thank you for that introduction, Alize. So what is the Go Green Initiative internship? The Go Green Initiative was founded by Jill Buck in 2002. The internship is all about educating the youth on important environmental issues we are facing. The main topics we learned about during this internship were sustainability and green issues in California. What did we do during the internship? Some of the things we did include creating flyers, infographics, and social media posts about the topics of waste and recycling, waste contamination, and current environmental legislation. We got to interact with guest speakers and ask them questions, which we prepared beforehand during our weekly meetings with interns from Pleasanton. For instance, we met with a representative from the Altamont landfill here in California. They informed us that this landfill does so much more than just collect trash. It creates renewable gas that powers thousands of homes, offers composting services, and part of the landfill is even dedicated to wildlife preservation. Overall, the whole internship experience also prepared us for an open house where we had open discussions with city officials to show what we learned and work together to find solutions for change. Now I'll be passing on to Madera intern Fatima, who will be talking about what we learned during the internship and be highlighting some of the work we produced.
Thank you, Suad, for that introduction. Through our internship, we had to research and understand how laws AB 1826, AB 341, and SB 1883 affected California residents and businesses. To summarize, law AB 1826 requires all businesses that produce two or more cubic yards of solid waste to compost. AB 341 requires businesses that produce more than four cubic yards of trash per week to recycle. And finally, SB 1383 demands cities to provide organic waste collection services to their communities. We specifically focused on these laws due to their importance regarding environmental efforts. Our work was very much influenced by these laws as our internship is focused on increasing efforts to protect our planet. The two images we, you see on the left are informational flyers designed by Madera interns to educate and spread awareness about these laws. Next slide, please. Another significant part of our internship was learning about how waste systems work here in California, particularly how recycling, composting, transfer stations, and landfills are all part of a network that is committed to keeping our plan, our communities clean and eco-friendly. In the middle of this slide, you can see two infographics. The one on the left gives a step-by-step guide on how to use your city's website to find recycling and composting information. The infographic on the right educates you about how to prevent waste contamination. Once again, these were both created by Madera interns. Now I will be passing it back to Belen, who will be wrapping up this presentation.
Thank you, Fatima. So in conclusion, I would like to express on behalf of myself and the rest of my colleagues here how this internship experience was an amazing opportunity, extremely engaging, informative, and valuable. We learned and did so much. Now, we would like to make some final requests to the city of Madera. First off, we would like to request the city of Madera to utilize its social media accounts and city website to regularly, regularly spread awareness of environmental events and issues, which can be by, which can be done by simply posting a hashtag or even an image, some of, even some of the ones that the Madera interns created. This could be a great way to educate everyone who follows those social media accounts and get the word out there. In addition, we would like to ask the city to increase, maintain, and encourage youth involvement in their city through programs such as this internship and with opportunities such as this one to speak at a city meeting. We will, we want to, we all want to work with you, so it would be, we would appreciate it if you would increase or make more opportunities for us to do so. Another request for the city would be to start thinking about beginning of recycling and waste education programs in our elementary schools to teach kids how to properly recycle, ensure that recycling is done properly in schools, and prevent waste. Another way in which you could educate others would be to include information on recycling and utility, utility bills to further educate those citizens of Madera. Finally, we would like to request that the city of Madera do all they can to effectively comply with Senate Bill 1383 and other environmental legislation in California. We are all aware that complying with these laws will cost money, but I invite you all here to think not of this as just wasting or, or spending money, but instead as investing in our planet, which is exactly what it is. So let us do the right thing, and let's be part of change.
I would like to take, thank NG for giving us the opportunity to participate in this incredible internship and making it possible. I would also like to thank all of you for giving us your time and undivided attention. If you have any questions and would like to view our contact information as well as this presentation, please feel free to scan the QR code below. Thank you.
I want to thank you very much for that presentation. That was an, an excellent job. Uh, you're a credit to your community here in Madera. Uh, I want to thank you for that, uh, coverage of the, of the item. And, uh, we will be looking in, into some of your suggestions. Uh, we'll have a discussion with our city manager, Arnaldo. Uh, but for the meantime, thank you very much for all that you're doing. Um, this is very important to us. Um, I believe we have two, um, hands raised, Alicia, uh, from the public?
We do, Mayor. Um, let's see here. We have two attendees, um, phone number ending in 6262. Would you like to speak now, or is this for a future, is this for a, a different agenda item?
I don't think they know how to unmute themselves from this.
Star nine to unmute yourself. Phone number ending in 6262.
Hi, yes. Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, my name is Roman Gonzalez. I'm calling on behalf of Mainstream. I like to, um, talk about the possible, uh, vertical licensing coming up in the future for possible votes.
Roman?
I want to...
Roman?
Yes.
Um, so this is, this is, uh, you can, uh, speak under public comment when we bring up the cannabis workshop. But, um, for now, you will... But for now, you will have to wait until that we open up that discussion. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Who's our next caller, Alicia?
I believe the other caller is also for cannabis. If you can verify caller. Phone number ending six-five-nine-zero. Is this also for the cannabis item?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, can you hear me? Hi, Honorable Mayor and council members. This is Rico from Mainstream. I just wanted to say thank you to Madera and everybody that attended and that just supported the event that we just had. Sunday is just truly an honor to help out the community. And I know it was short notice. We put, you know, we put the event together and were a little skeptical and nervous that it wasn't going to turn out the way we had liked and it was the opposite. It was a very nice event, family-friendly. We made a lot of kids happy. It just brought joy to us, warmed our hearts to see everybody just have a great time. And I just wanted to say thank you. You know, it's truly an honor to do this for the community and we look forward to doing more as we move forward. I didn't want to go and touch on the subject of cannabis, but we are potentially going to be trying to obtain a license. And again, I just wanted to say thank you. We had a great time. The kids enjoyed it. Everybody out there had a great time and we just really look forward to serving the community in the future. And we thank you.
Thank you very much for that, Rico. Alright, I believe we can move on to item A. If we don't have any further comments, we are moving on to the workshop, item A-one.
Mayor, if I may, we have one more presentation from the Madera Youth Commission.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm getting ahead of myself. Who do we have from the Youth Commission?
We have Yvette Flores and Johnny Mendez, who will be providing council with an update.
Okay.
Alicia, will I be able to share a screen in the presentation?
Yes. Is that option available for you, Johnny, on the bottom of your screen?
Let's see. Yes, perfect. Thank you. There you are. I'll pass that over to my staff member, Yvette Flores.
Hello, everyone. My name is Yvette Flores and I'm the program coordinator for the Madera Youth Commission. I'd like to say thank you to council and the mayor for allowing us this time to present an update on what we have been doing. So we go on to the next slide, Johnny. Before we begin the presentation, I'd like to paint a little picture of what the Youth Commission has been living during the pandemic and as youth commissioners and as youth in Madera. So the Madera Youth Commission is a team of six commissioners who have, in the past year, have collectively read forty books, written eighty-five papers, worked three part-time jobs, completed over a hundred and fifty volunteer hours, joined over five hundred Zoom calls each, attended seven different schools and colleges, participated in over ten non-WLI programs, and served as Madera Youth Commissioners. So I hope this helped paint a little picture of what the kind of life that they have going on as commissioners of this team. And the reason why I bring this up is because here at the Youth Leadership Institute, we believe in youth and adult partnerships. So we recognize all of the work that these young people are doing as students and what they can give as leaders. And so on this next slide here, I'm going to toss it over to Johnny to talk a little bit more about the Youth Leadership Institute and their history here in Madera.
Awesome. Thank you, Yvette, and to everybody, what's in council members and Mayor Santos, thank you for your time here tonight. So a little bit about wildlife. We've been in Madera for the past three years or so. And this past year, we found some funding to continue the Youth Commission with a partner of ours from the SH Cal Foundation. When wildlife first came into Madera in twenty, I believe twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, the hope was to engage young people in ways where they can foster and really be empowered to see Madera as their own community and foster that homegrown type leadership here for young people and really support city council and seeing youth issues from a youth perspective and a youth lens and then provide city council and necessary staff there with suggestions and how to approach such issues or whatnot. And so that, right, is kind of in a nutshell, how wildlife, what wildlife has done here and with the commission sitting in there. As Yvette has stated, this past year, we've been very busy doing different things, supporting, we'll go into later on as well, but supporting Madera Youth if I school this trip with different events, different trainings, training members, training students at Madera, Madera Community College. And so I'm very happy to report that the Youth Commission has done a lot to really engage the community and support young people throughout the city of Madera. Let's run next slide here. And a little bit about us here, the staff from Madera, you see myself there, the program manager for Madera Youth Programs here for wildlife. Cynthia Stifler-Rocha is our Central Val Program Director. And you see Yvette Flores there as the program manager. Yvette Flores works very closely with the Youth Commissioners here and has an amazing job at building their capacity on youth issues, seeing problems holistically and creating those long-lasting sustainable solutions that create that positive change we want to see in our Madera community. Cool.
So for our next slide, I would like to present the rest of our Youth Commission. So that's the six of us. So I'll introduce myself first. My name is Isha Baines. I'm the Youth Commissioner for District Six. And then we have Alexia Sanchez, who is the Youth Commissioner for the mayor's office. Isabella Ventura, who is the Youth Commissioner for District Four. And then we have Solchi Pignetta, who's the Honorary Commissioner for District Five. Julieta Roscoe, the Honorary Commissioner for District One. And last but not the least, Avery Cordero, who's the Youth Commissioner for District Two.
Yeah, so that was a little bit about our YLI team and our Youth Commission team. And so I'm happy you got to see their faces, even if they were just on really small slide screens. And now this slide, I wanted to talk a little bit about the work that the Youth Commission has supported as leaders outside of the work that they were doing as youth commissioners. So the Madera Youth Commission has stood up in spaces to support youth needs during the pandemic. One way they have done that is by creating virtual youth spaces such as spooky night and holiday celebrations. So during the pandemic, we know that we were not able to have physical contact, but just because we weren't able to be in a physical room together didn't mean that we couldn't celebrate together. So the Youth Commission did a really good job of bringing that to a virtual space. We had over sixty young people on both of those events, which was really impressive for a virtual training that was done last minute. So that was really great. Another thing that the Madera Youth Commission has done is represent Madera at the Rural Pride Justice Summit and the California Department of Education's Equity Summit. Not only were they speakers as panelists, but also moderators for some of the discussions that they had across the state about the experiences of rural youth and also the experiences of what it's like to be online virtually for school. The last thing that the Madera Youth Commission has done as leaders to support has been a little bit of what Johnny had mentioned earlier, and that has been supporting the staff with training of the Madera Community College Student Advocacy Council and also other Madera youth via the Madera Youth Changemakers Workshop Series. So as these young people were developing their own leadership skills, they were also helping a staff train other young people so they can develop their own skills as well. And so we go on to this next slide. Now we can talk about the work that they have done as a team. And so the Madera, one of the biggest projects that the team has been working on for the past year has been the Madera Youth Commission Activity Resource Book, Activity and Research Book. They've also been working on embarking some funding for a community creative crosswalk and also embarking in some research about community apps. So with the Madera Youth Commission book and app, this was aimed to increase communication across young people, adults, and council so that we can have resources and information that was easily and readily accessible. And so one way that the Commission has done that is by creating an activity book that includes resources that were not only local but state resources that were very necessary during COVID and also very necessary for crises such as food or medical needs. And so it could be a place that has activities and also resources for young people and adults. This has kind of been something that they've been working on with the Madera Community App. This was an idea that they have and while they did some research, realized that the Madera County has an app and have been working on embarking on some more research to learn how we can utilize that app or emulate it with the city to increase that communication. And then the last thing that we have to report about the Creative Crosswalks is that the Youth Leadership Institute has applied for grants to support the project with funding, but unfortunately, we're not able to receive that grant, but we were highly recommended for reapplication of the Safe Roots to Parks Grant, so we can further that project. And so we go on to the next slide, which is just two examples that I wanted to show of how the Youth Commission has brought inclusivity and communication across the community. So this is the example, this is the cover of the Madera Youth Commission Resource and Activity Book. Hopefully, all of you have seen it or can see it. It is being physically distributed at the Madera County Library and it is available online at the, at yli.org. And the next picture that we have along with this one is an example of a Madera Youth Commission agenda. As you can see, right after the Pledge of Allegiance, the Youth Commission has placed land acknowledgements on their agendas. And this was a way in their first step in embarking on some research to learn about the history and the relationship between the city of Madera and the native people and lands in which we live. This is all to build community. That is something that is very important to the Youth Commission. And before we close, I wanted to toss it over to Isha Baines to close us off with a little bit of a story about why building community has been so important for her.
Oh, hi, everybody. It's me again. So earlier, I made a public comment about the farmers' protests, but now I wanted to enlighten us on the significance of community building. So I wanted to start off by telling a true story to give an example where a simple show of solitude goes a long way. So as a sixth grader, that's like more than like seven years ago, I invited my elementary school principal to attend a small gathering we had to hold a candlelight vigil for a school shooting that had taken place. To this day, we remember those individuals coming and simply standing alongside our group. This makes, today still, it makes me feel important and it makes me feel like that bridge to our community. Such a simple step made such a change for the Punjabi Sikh community. Imagine what impacts the council support can have for many other smaller groups in our united community. As a Youth Commissioner, I see nothing wrong with our community binding together and representing its diversity. As a Youth Commissioner, community building has brought me ever so close to my group and myself, honestly. I realize that if I'm not making positive changes to the place where I was brought up and utilizing the power in the voice given to me, then I'm simply just occupying a seat. Having a positively strong community is important for everyone. People coming together and voicing one opinion is much stronger than one solo voice standing on its own, but there always has to be a starting point. Building communities is a process that not only fosters connection amongst people, but it offers a collective space for sharing experiences and not just keeping one's mouth shut. Everyone needs to feel safe and welcome where they live and community building might just be the beginning. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you all for your time here this evening. And as I last said, please leave us if you have any questions, the city council, and mayor for your time here tonight.
Thank you very much. And in regards to the struggle in India regarding the farmers, I had the honor of writing a letter in support and to pull back on some of those laws that were passed that are discriminatory in nature and hurtful to the Indian people. So I just wanted to let you know that, but we will bring this up at a later time. I have a hand raised in council chambers. Who would like to speak? The councilwoman, Gairos?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Garcia. I just wanted to thank our Youth Commissioners for all their time that they put in and volunteering. I know it's not easy because you were on Zoom at your schools at home and you had other responsibilities that your parents have put upon you. So taking the time to be the leaders that you are and representing us as a city and getting that knowledge and bringing it back to us, I would like to thank you so much for your time away from your family and given to the residents of Madera.
I don't see any more hands raised, so I want to thank you again for your presentation. Thank you very much for the hard work that you all are doing. When I saw that list of things that you were all involved in, I was taken aback because I thought we were busy, but you were really bringing it on here. So thank you very much and we will, we will see you again soon. Alright, I believe we can move on now to the workshop. I don't see no hands raised. This workshop, item A-one, is Cannabis Business Permits, Procedures, Guidelines, and Review Criteria and Number of Cannabis Business Permits to be Issued. I believe, Mr. Rodriguez, you have this item?
I sure do, Mayor. Thank you very much. To preface this item, just to reiterate something the mayor just said, that this is a workshop only. City staff is looking for direction this evening. No formal action is expected tonight. And the reason I indicate that is should any of the community members wish to provide input, unite and act a little night to do it, or they can always follow up by providing us comments directly here at the city. So allow me to share my screen. And I believe council can see my PowerPoint at this time?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. So just for the purposes of background here, the cannabis item goes back a little bit more than a year here at the city of Madera. It actually predates this, however, that was part of my time here at the city. I know back prior to two thousand and twenty, the city council did have some discussions, I believe around two thousand and sixteen or two thousand and seventeen. However, back around a little more than a year ago, city staff had invited HDL to provide an overview of the status of cannabis in the state of California. As councils are aware, there has been a lot of legislation at the state level, both voter-approved and also by the state legislators, that regulate the cannabis industry. Subsequent to that meeting, the city council did approve a contract for approximately thirty thousand dollars for services to be provided by HDL to place the ballot item or a ballot measure on the November third general election ballot and then also to help us prepare both the regulatory ordinance and then the guidelines. Following that meeting on June twenty-fourth, the council discussed potential business license tax. We followed it up with that on the fifteenth of two thousand and twenty, where the council elected to place it on the ballot. At that point, city staff did go a bit dormant until the voters elected to approve a business license tax. And then on January the sixth of this year, the city council held its initial workshop to begin the discussion of both policies and procedures and what that looks like. We followed up with that on January the twentieth, so two weeks later, and that item was continued. We had a subsequent follow-up discussion on April the twenty-first. On May the twelfth, the city council initiated a text amendment to the city's municipal code. On May the twenty-fourth, the planning commission considered said text amendment. On June the seventh, the city council considered the initial reading of the regulatory ordinance. Followed up with, on June sixteenth, the city council adopted the regulatory ordinance, both in the public welfare section of the Madera Code as well as the Business and Professions and Trades section of the code. Sandwiched in between all of that, in late of two thousand and twenty, the city staff did hold three workshops on the ballot measure. Two of those were held in English and one was in Spanish and all of those, because of the pandemic, were held via Zoom. The only reason I provide all of this is just to, it really, it serves as a reminder that this process has not been done in a silo, rather, it's been very iterative on numerous meetings and workshops. That's always a good reminder about how we ended up where we're at. So the purpose of this meeting, again, it's, city staff is seeking direction on business permits, procedure guidelines, and review criteria for applications. Back in April, city council did provide city staff with correction on the number of permits. Uh. Back in April, city council did provide city staff with correction on the number of permits. However, subsequent to that, there has been some discussion and um. So city staff right now is of the understanding that six retail licenses and two social equity licenses. However, I think it would be a good idea if if council simply wanted to confirm that direction this evening. So in your staff report, in your packet. Uh, city staff identified three different types of license types and. The first one being standard applications, which would commonly be referred to as a retail license, but again, this is a standard application. The second one is a social equity application. And the third one being the vertically integrated comma cultivation, comma distribution, comma manufacturing. Comma for Tesla applications. Um. And then um again, the draft guidelines were provided um as part of the staff report. So the standard application, I'm going to walk through the process of the standard application. We start off with the standard application because this very well could be the the item that that has the most community interest. So the process, we would have a community or 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 kickoff meeting, which would serve as an orientation to the process itself. Uh. More than likely, that could happen on a Saturday um or. Or in the evening, and the concept being is that it would provide us an opportunity to answer a lot of the questions that would come through the process. Um. Each owner uh would have to undergo a criminal background check and a zoning notification letter from the city would be required. So so phase one of the process, city staff um as well as um with the assistance of a consultant. Would would determine the eligibility of the applicants. Um. At that point, those those applications that would be determined to uh to continue will move on to phase two. And so phase two would be the foremost middle of an application by applicants. And the 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 review criteria is broken down uh in sections A through section H. Of of the application. The points that were allocated. Were tempted to come up with criteria based on feedback that staff had received from council during these workshops. So the maximum number of points an application could receive for business plan would be up to four hundred points. Labor Equity Diversity and Inclusion Plan of four hundred points, a safety plan of three hundred points, security plan of three hundred. The qualifications of the owners would be four hundred, neighborhood compatibility would be four hundred. Community benefits and investments plan would be five hundred and then the proposed location would be three hundred. Staff would take those um along with a consultant. We would go through the applications very thoroughly. From speaking with with um with David from H D L who was joining in this evening. Um. Every application takes roughly twenty five hours to to review. Uh. So these applications are relatively dense. There there typically several hundred pages of information. And there's a lot of information to obviously review, but at the end of the day, I believe it's the council's prerogative to make sure that we're selecting the best potential business owners to. To uh to to partner with. Um. And then as part of phase two. Those those applicants that would score a ninety percent or higher, which if I did my math right, I believe it's twenty seven hundred points in total. Would 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 um. So it's ninety percent or higher. Would be selected to to continue to face three. Um. In in the guidelines, there's language that indicates that a minimum of ten applicants who score a minimum of ninety percent or higher may be eligible to advance. However, at the city's discretion, um and based on the overall quality of applications received, that number could be increased. So that that number could hypothetically be increased to twelve or thirteen, or it could be up to fifteen. Um. And again, the scoring would be completed by city staff along with a consultant um going through those applications. Those those applicants that would be selected to continue to face three. Would and would then be invited to to a public meeting. The the purpose of the public meeting is not for approval of an application, rather, the purpose is to allow. Uh, community residents an opportunity to to voice any concerns. And so it's largely to solicit community feedback. We want to be sure we're being transparent as part of the process. And the applicants would um they too would be invited and they could directly address some of the concerns potentially uh. Brought up by the community. Um. Subsequent to this community meeting, um the city staff would prepare a staff report. And we would present those applicants or those uh those applications to the city council. And then the council would interview and ultimately awarded the permits. Based based on the different scoring system or or on the line of questioning that council would have. So so council could very well interview a minimum of ten applicants, but uh but that number I I. At the end of the day, would be uh it would be determined by council. More than likely, the interview process itself could could take a couple of evenings. Um. And and a couple of evenings would be determined by the number of applications or. Or or the number of applicants that council would invite to the interview process. That interview process would be, it would be open to the public and um and and so it would be done. In theory, either on the council chambers or or via Zoom um how how we're operating this evening. The second type of application would be the social equity application. The social equity application and the process would be very similar to the standard application that I described. Earlier, with the exception of a couple of key themes. Uh. One of them, there's appendix B, which I'll go over in a little bit. And appendix B was um it was attached to the staff report. However, the social the social equity application, staff is proposing that. That these applications be 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 processed prior to the standard application. The primary reason for that is. If an applicant files an application under social equity. Um. It it could be possible that that during the application process. That that they are deemed to be ineligible for social equity application or permit. That doesn't mean that they're ineligible to obtain. A cannabis business license, rather, it simply means that they don't meet the strict application or the strict criteria is outlined in appendix B. So at that point, they would be provided an opportunity to apply for a standard application rather than the social equity application. The problem is if you use the standard application, um and um if the standard application were considered initially. Prior to the social equity, you wouldn't have that option. So again, we're trying to be fair to to potential applicants. In terms of the pointing sys uh point system, it's very comparable with the exception, one thing that you'll notice here. That section H is missing and that's the location. Um. So. So the location would would not be scored under the social equity piece. In in terms of appendix B, which I referred to a couple of minutes ago. The social equity criteria, um and this is obviously all. On the thirty thousand foot level, it's a summary. There's 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 a. Appendix B goes into greater detail, so this is simply an overview. So appendix B identifies that 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 an applicant has to reside within Madera County. And they have had to reside in in Madera County for at least five years to be eligible for social equity. Uh, permit. They would have had to been arrested after November fifth nineteen ninety six. And they would have had to been convicted of cannabis crime in the county. Uh. The definition of of an owner is an individual or an entity who has identified as owning fifty one percent of of the business. Uh, they have an household income, add or less the county median uh income as identified by the U S Census data. And it's based on household size. And then the applicants uh would be permitted to change locations prior to the public meeting. And David can provide a couple of examples or he can go on a little bit more detail at um. Bit here. So in terms of the. The average median incomes, and these are obviously subject to change based on the census data, so they probably go up a little tiny bit, but not by much. Or they may go down a little bit. So for one percent household, um an applicant would have to have. An income of forty one thousand nine hundred seventy nine dollars or less. Up for two people, it's slightly less than forty um seven thousand and so on and so forth. For vertically integrated applications, this, the initial review process in phase one would be identical. To to the standard applications. So going back to the retail applications, they would be identical. Um. What would be a little bit different would be phase two. So council may recall that in phase two. Uh, of the standard application. Um. Only those applicants receiving a minimum of ninety percent or greater would advance to phase three. For the vertically integrated applications, staff is proposing that those applicants that receive a minimum of eighty percent. Would be allowed to move forward to phase three. So so the number is reduced from ninety percent to eighty percent. The public meeting process phase three is identical and phase four is comparable. However. The nuance being that the city manager would prepare a report and we would present the 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 application to council for formal action. However, based on previous council direction, it would be about quality control, just ensuring that they're good business operators. And the reason for that is council may recall that for the standard applications, council had pre had previously directed staff. That um to include the maximum number of applications to six for retail, two for social equity. And for vertical integration. Um. We were not going to place a maximum number of permits within the city. Rather, what we indicated is that it was more important to control the quality or ensure that there's a minimum quality. Um, rather than an overrun number of permits. So again, that's why it goes back to scoring. That that those applicants that receive eighty percent or greater would be allowed. Or they would be granted a permit. There's no maximum number of permits for vertical integration. And and I'm saying vertical integration. Um, that that includes cultivation, um and that includes some of the others. One other item that is included in the vertical integration that I believe makes it slightly more desirable. Um, is that council may recall is that the ordinance that you adopted. When I say two weeks ago. Um, that 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 if that if a vertically integrated shop. Has a minimum of twenty thousand square feet of canopy area and that would be for a growth area in the city. They would be eligible to operate a retail or non storefront retail business, so long as they had a minimum of three non retail permits in the city. So in other words, so long as a business had twenty thousand square feet of canopy area. They would automatically receive a retail license in the city. And with that, um I know there's some questions about micro businesses and what I'm going to do is is turn that over to um. To David and maybe David can fill us in on micro businesses because they are somewhat nuanced. And then the other item that maybe if if David can elaborate on is is the logic of not scoring the location. For social equity, if that's appropriate. And again, this is intended to serve as a workshop, nor formal action is being requested. Rather, just correction from council to make sure that staff is is on the right path. So when we do come back for formal action, that that we um that we're not off the mark. So with that, um I can turn it over to David if that's okay.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Um. So to answer to the question, one of the reasons why we are not requiring a location. For the social equities because once we determine the number currently could potentially ten or more on the standards. The rest of them, when they don't qualify to move forward. Then the assumption is that would free up some properties to give the social equities more options. And also the social equities don't move that don't move to step three, that would also free up additional uh properties. There was a concern, the ad hoc, that we wanted to make sure part of the social equity is that they are given opportunities and not locked out. Of being able to find properties or have to compete for high rents. And so this would give them more flexibility to be. A little more selective and maybe improve the location that they might have as a potential option when those properties are available, which may not be. In the front in the front for them. So in order to do that, we had to remove the location component in there. So that when they go to the public meeting, it did, but that, you know, that location could be an issue. So we want to make sure that. The public knows the location, but when they go to the public meeting for that purpose. The second question, another one to me to to respond to was the eighty percent. And as he mentioned to you, we've dropped the the level to that because that is. The quality level of expectation of what the state is. We want to make sure that the quality applicant that goes to the state once approved by the city. Will be able successfully able to get a license at the state and we've set that tier to to make sure that they are successful at that. The third thing that he wanted me to touch on is the the micro business and. Question might be is what's the difference between a micro business and a vertically integrated business? A vertical a vertically integrated business by state law could end up having four different licenses for the each of the. Components that they are actually doing as described in the definition for vertically integrated. However, a micro business might have four, but they only need to have three of the four. So again, cultivation, manufacturing, distribution and retail, either storefront and non storefront. They only have to have a minimum of three of those for four activities to qualify. But they also have two other restrictions on them. One is they can't have more than ten thousand square feet of cultivation. And for the micro business component of it, they are limited to non volatile extracting machines um or processing. So that's what defines and makes a micro business and it must be on the same in the same property um in order to qualify for that.
Thank you very much. You have any follow up there, Arnold, before I move on to my colleagues?
No, Mayor, so I'm I'm fine. Thank you.
Alrighty, uh, Mr. Jose Rodriguez, council member.
Uh, yes, thank you, uh, Mayor Garcia. Uh, I I think, David, you answered the question regarding the eighty percent. I I think we use eighty percent to signify that that's the minimum. Of what the state requires, not so much the city, but rather the state, and that's because it's by by right type of a. A process for for the non retail. So I just want to 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 expand on that, and I think you did. Just want to confirm again. The eighty percent is to meet state standards for non retail, correct?
That's correct.
Now, the the one of the the comments that I'll have is in regards to. The application, I know that this is only a draft, but all three of those applications do. Do state the number of licenses and I think that that can be somewhat confusing. So for the retail side, I think you should have the number of licenses for retail. Whereas a social equity, you should also have that very clear on the application that that's the licenses. Uh, as directed by council, which there's a number there as well. And when it comes to the non retail. Slash vertical integration, then we should be also very, very direct in that there is not a limit of license. Uh, there's just a standard of quality, buy right process. And also just to uh cover only the non retail components, vertical integration. And and not so much because I think it's confusing for folks to read applications that have same language. And all three, especially with the number of licenses. So that would be one of my um. Uh, asks is that we do that for these uh for these applications when we clean them up.
In in council chambers, could you indicate who would like to speak?
So, thank you.
First of all, let me acknowledge Hilda. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Hilda.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Um. Just a couple of things, and I think council member Rodriguez touched on it. Uh, very clearly that uh what's in front of you as far as your package are uh drafts. Of the narratives of what Mr. Rodriguez presented in PowerPoint uh presentation. And so uh those are drafts. Uh, they're pretty much done. Uh, but we will be tweaking them uh and clarifying. We want to make sure that everything's as clear as possible. We will take uh Ms. Councilmember Rodriguez's comments and any other comments by by the council. Forward in in ensuring that the that the procedures are clear for everyone. Um. And what what will happen next is once we get your direction at the end of this meeting. Uh, we will uh finalize those criteria and uh bring back two resolutions to you. Uh, at the next meeting, in the first meeting in September, since this is not scheduled for August. The first meeting in September, we would bring two resolutions. One would be a resolution adopting uh the. adopting the number of permits because the ordinance says that by resolution you must provide for that. And number two, again, the ordinance says that by resolution, you set the criteria and the guidelines. So these, these are three sets of criteria and guidelines would be attachments to a resolution. And I just wanted to clarify that. And can answer questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Who ordered to speak in council chambers?
Alright, so Mayor, so my question is going to kind of be piggybacking on Councilmember Rodriguez's question for the non-retail. So I see that there, the, the processes are really similar across all three application types. And I'm, I'm getting, you know, people are asking me questions. So if somebody wants to apply for two different types of licenses, is that something that they would not be able to do? So say they want to do a standard for retail and then maybe later on, they want to do something like a cultivation. And the cultivation is by right, but the standard would not be. So would, how, how would that process work? So say they, they were successful in obtaining a retail license. And then in a, at a future date, they wanted to apply for a cultivation license, which is something that they could do by right. And right now, the process seems like there's going to be a certain timeframe where you can apply for all three. And I apologize if I missed it, but so that to me, that seems like it would, it would not allow somebody to apply for those two licenses at different times. And I understand the standard license, there's a timeframe, but not the non-retail. Am I, am I reading it incorrectly?
Mayor, if I may respond to that?
Sure.
Councilman Montez, so the goal really is the dates, anything retail is really the thing that's a little tighter for the vertically and then non-competitive ones. Ideally, we have dates on here, really more to give staff an understanding of resources on the initial route. So once that initial, that initial phase goes through, they could reopen it, reopen the process to anything that could be the unlimited because there, there's no restriction on them. They just want to get a, trying to get a grasp on that initial, the initial phase of what the universe looks like. And then once they know that and they can process them and get those moving, as you know, you're going to have to go through some of this at your level. Then they could always reopen it up for the non-competitive ones again. But by putting a time on it, if you end up getting a hundred of them, you go, whoa, whoa, that's not what we were thinking. But if you also at the opposite end didn't get it much, then they could open it up and do it unlimited time once they kind of understand what the, what the impact is and also staff resources. That's how it was designed.
Okay. So that's just so we can initially digest what is coming at us.
Absolutely.
Okay. But and it can be an ongoing process depending on what we see.
For the unlimited, for the unlimited.
Okay, for the unlimited. So then that, I guess that kind of ties into my next question regarding the same thing where if this is a by right, for, for these regs, it does come to council for approval. Even the non-retail. Correct?
Correct.
Is that for the same? I mean, is that the same rationale where if we get two hundred applications, say, okay, well, at that point right now, that there's no limit, but at that point, we want to say, okay, we're going to pare that down to a little bit less.
Yeah, and, and maybe I'll defer that to Hilda on response to, when she would address that.
Yeah, I think that would be, be correct. I think that, that, and, and I think the term by right maybe is not that accurate because it's not like they can just fill in the blank. They, they still have to follow very stringent requirements. And for many of those that are in that, those categories beyond the, the standard and beyond the, the social equity, those are going to require a lot more intense review. They're going to, some of them may require, for example, a sequo analysis. So they're diff, they're, we're saying by right and by right, I think we meant that, that there's, they're not restricted at this time by numbers, but they could in the future, you're right. At, at some point, it, it could be that, well, we already have five or three, you, you decide, you're the council, what, what, what level is too much saturation and, and it's just becoming too, too much. And, and that's the other thing that maybe we could include in that clarification for that third one, as far as clarifying that, yes, there's a deadline, but there will be multiple, multiple periods of time when somebody can come in and apply. And, and we would clarify that at this time, there's no limit, but there could be some.
Right. So somebody's asking me the question, can I apply for a standard and then later on apply for a cultivation? Technically, my answer is, I don't know, right? I mean, you can now, but that, you know, it could change in the future.
Correct. But now, yeah, but the answer today would be yes, or when you finalize your regulation.
Yes. And so per the regs, since we only have one, you know, submission period, would we have to come back and open up another one? Or is, is that something that, you know, we'll close it if we don't, you know, agree with what we see or something? So, so we have right, right now, we have one submission period.
Or which one?
For a non-retail, for, for all of them. We have one period to submit all applications. And then if, depending on what we see, we have to come back to the council and say, we want another period? Or is it just going to kind of continue until we say, okay, no, no more?
Right. You could go through the process and, and some, some argue that there would be so many applicants that, that's going to be hard to pick. But you could end up deciding to approve less than the maximum number. And so at that point, you, you would open up a new, new time period for new submissions. And, but I don't think that you'd need to revise the regulations unless you really feel that you need to.
Okay. And then the other, the other question that I had, I don't know if, if any of my colleagues want to jump in, take all the, the time.
If, if you don't, if you don't mind, Councilmember Montez, I think I have a clarification from Arnoldo, and then we can acknowledge Councilwoman Evans, and then we come back, we can come back to you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Come one, come one potential option very well could be that for the non-retail, if council would like, we, we, we could set a date hypothetically saying that whoever submits an application prior to October the first will receive priority processing. And anyone that submits after October the first is, is going to have to wait until staff processes all the applications submitted prior to October the first. And I think that would help mitigate some of the concerns that Councilmember Montez had identified is there's, there's no cap. So, so what happens if someone comes in after that initial rush, right? And I'm calling it a rush. Assuming that we're going to come receive a lot of applications, but we don't really know. And, and so it very well could be that council says whoever applies by this date, that's your priority. After that day, you're going to have to be a little patient with this. So anyways, kind of, and that's just a thought.
Yeah, that's, that's a good, that's a good point. Councilwoman Evans? You're on mute, council member.
I'm sorry, please forgive me. I'm, I'm asking in layman's terms as far as the retail and the vertical. If they apply for the retail, are they able to still apply for the vertical or will it go straight across? They'll receive the retail and then they'll automatically be able to do the vertical or do they need to apply for each one? Licensing.
Yeah. So right now, they would have to apply for two separate, two separate applications. Cultivation is only permitted in the industrial zone districts. And cultivation is not currently permitted in the retail. So, so they, they would have to submit for two different applications. And David, I'm going to come look at you to see if you would like to clarify to make sure that I'm not misspeaking.
Yeah, I think one of the things Councilman Evans is trying to get at is if I apply for a standard retail and I apply for a vertical which has retail, can I do that? And the answer is, we don't want them to play the games to expand the number of retails they are. They can, the, the, the procedures say that anything that has retail, you can only apply for one during this period. So you either choose to go vertically and, and get the retail or you compete for, you compete for the standard which has retail, but you can't do both.
Okay, right. Because that's what I was wondering. If that would be the case, then they could hold up two licensings for one individual corporation, which if another individual would want to apply for that single licensing for the retail, then they would be knocked out of it because now the cultivator would also apply for the retail as well as for the vertical, and that would take two licensings there versus two different individuals being able to have licenses. Am I correct?
That's correct. So we're not allowing that. Anything that retail, you can only, you have to select only one during this, during this period, regardless of what level. Social equity, standard or vertically, you choose one of them on the retail side and you, that's all you can do is just one.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Montez, do you want to finish up?
Yeah. Thank you. I think did Councilman Rodriguez have a comment? I think he had his hand up.
Well, if you could finish up your part, then I can go over to Mr. Rodriguez.
The, the question for, you know, one, some other questions that I've been getting is the twenty thousand square foot canopy space. And it just, you know, for the benefit of the public, does the facility have to be over twenty thousand square feet? So the question is, can they have, you know, a single story building that has maybe, you know, a lot of space interior and they can build li, literally vertically? Would, would we be able to evaluate that and see if they'd meet the twenty thousand square foot canopy space in a smaller than twenty thousand square foot building? It looks like everybody's like, what is he talking about?
So the, the possibility, the only scenario where someone could have twenty thousand square feet in a smaller building is if they stacked it to get the requirement of just as you would be taxed. Whatever you can be taxed on, whatever the state would look at for the, for the purposes of the twenty two thousand square and the purpose, I think, in the spirit Councilmembers Rodriguez is to generate the revenue that they would meet that criteria in order to get, to hit all three of those.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Garcia. You know, Arnoldo's point to the, the non-retail again, giving priority if submitted before October first and again, you know, just expanding on that too, on the application process that, you know, maybe due to an excessive amount of processing. I mean, but like no other business coming to industrial zone, I think by right, as long as they meet the criteria of what the minimum requirements are, not only for the state, but also for the city, then I think, then they have a legit application and permit. When that gets processed, again, depends on staff and, and, and how we get to that. But I like the idea there, Arnoldo, of making that a priority. On, on the other, on the other point that I wanted to make is early on in, in the conversations of cannabis, you know, the consultant, Mr. McPherson certainly brought up the, the amount of, of attraction towards retail and also the non-retail. And with this new concept of vertical integration, he was able to share that in many cities or many, many counties that have experienced this, you know, you see a lot more on the retail side and not so much on the non-retail. And I don't know that we're going to see over ten, twenty applications on the non-retail. I think based on your estimate there, David, you had brought maybe three to four. Who knows, maybe five or six, but nevertheless, you know, I, I like the idea of, of just submitting your application. Try to get the priority, get that pushed through. We, we certainly want to see these businesses grow in Madera. So I, I, I would, I would certainly, you know, just make the language where it's, where it's, where it's understandable for, for people that are trying to apply for this. Are you telling me that are you telling me that I can't put a permit by this time? And I think to, to Hilda's point, if we can clean that up, I think folks that are looking to establish business in Madera, I think it'll make it a lot easier for them. But again, to David's point, I, I, I don't see that we're going to have a vast majority like we are on the retail side for the non-retail. And, and, you know, I, I, I would, you know, not focus a lot of energy on, on, on trying to put certain deadlines or what have you. We might just end up with one or two. I, I, I mean, that's, that's why we want to move this forward so that we can get data assessed and maybe open it up, maybe after a year when we see, hey, there's, there's a lot more demand than what we anticipated. Let's bring this back and make the changes that are necessary. Those are my comments, Mr. Mayor.
I'm going to chime in and then I'm going to recognize someone in the council chamber. I'm not sure which one. And then I'll go to you, Councilwoman Evans. So from the get-go, I wanted the equity piece to be significant because I would like to see more people get involved in the, in the, in, in this brand new business that we're going to bring to the city of Madera. As we all know, the big money companies, they're, they've already been in the practice. They, they've got tons of money. And that is shown to us by all the, the, the properties that are being snatched up throughout the city, both in the industrial areas and the, and, and non-industrial areas. And so the big money player is going to come in. What I want to see is us be, giving the opportunity to get into the business from the small mom and pops to be able to do this. That would be micro businesses, small businesses. And so I would like to increase the equity piece to four from the two to give a more folks the ability to get into this on the equity side. I'd also like to reduce the twenty thousand square foot to ten thousand square feet. The reason for that is there are a number of buildings that are available in the ten thousand square foot that are affordable. And the twenty thousand square foot buildings are, are up through the roof as far as cost is concerned. And so I want to be able to have more, more people involved in this venture and folks that we can make it affordable through them. And so then that's, those are the two points that I would like to make. And then I'd also like to look at the, the financial aspect of the social equity piece. I'd like to revisit that, but I haven't really had time to delve into that. And having said that, someone in council chambers wants to speak?
Yeah, so.
Can I get it, Hank?
Right here. So, so two, two questions, just for clarification, and then I have a response to some of that stuff. So non-storefront delivery, that's considered, what is that considered?
Retail.
Retail, okay.
It's just no walk-in traffic for a retailer.
Okay. So then, and the nursery licenses, is that something that's not addressed? Is that just encompassed in cultivation?
Cultivation, yes.
Okay. All right. And then so my opinion on the equity piece, I think that we need to move forward. We've been kind of going back and forth on this. We've already given direction of the whole council. I think it was unanimous last time on how we're going to move forward. And we did talk about the equity piece extensively. I, I don't think, especially now, we're not even sure what you really want, Mayor, on, on the equity piece. You got to look at it again. I think we move forward tonight, give direction saying this is what we have, this is what council has agreed to. And then we do have an opportunity to go back and revisit at a future date if we so choose. But getting these businesses moving forward, I think is going to be the best for the community. You're going to, you're going to see some of the revenues come in, you're going to see some of the jobs coming in. You know, you're seeing people get to work and that's what we want. As far as the twenty thousand square foot requirement, that's why I asked the question if we can go vertical, because people have been asking me this stuff as well. And I think that if you, if you change the requirement, just, just like the argument with, with the lottery, if you change this requirement, you're changing it for everybody. And what's going to happen is these big guys are going to come and gobble up these little shops as well. And, and it's not going to produce the outcome that some people think it's going to produce. So, but what it is going to do, it, it could, you could potentially spring up a lot more retail shops that, that was one of the things that we're even still considering limiting. If we get too many applications, we're going to pump the brakes. So I think, I don't think that we should decrease that requirement because we're already talking about, hey, well, if there's too much, we're going to have to pump the brakes on, on this stuff. So my opinion, what I, we would, we should move forward with what we have today and not change that. Because we go back and forth forever, we're never going to have in, industry that we can start getting jobs and revenue from. Those are my comments.
Alicia, do you have any public comment?
I do, Mayor. I've received a public comment via email. We also have someone on the phone with their hand raised. Would you like to take the call first or would you like me to read the? Would you like to take the call first or would you like me to read the public comment first?
Uh, let's take the call first.
Okay, caller, um, phone number ending six, five, nine, zero. Please unmute yourself.
Can you give them the instructions, Alicia?
They've just unmuted.
Hello. Hello, Mayor Garcia and council members. This is Rico Saldivar again, Mainstream Medicinal. And I just had a question in regards to the building's, um, qualifications. Where, where, me and my team, we're seeking buildings right now to try to meet the, uh, vertical integration license, um, right now. And the buildings that we've come across, there's some that are in a set of two, so they're like on the same property, but there's two buildings next to each other that are anywhere between ten, twelve thousand square feet apiece, but they have different suite numbers on them. Were, my question is, would we be able to acquire both if need be and will those qualify as one? Would we be able to apply that way? And, um, and same thing would be for like any type of neighboring buildings that may not be owned by the same owner, but if there's two buildings and we were able to acquire both neighboring buildings, could we then conjoin them, those two addresses onto our application to qualify, um, as one for our license that we would be applying for, for the vertical integration? That's my question in regards to the building. I'm not sure if you guys are going to make any edits um, in terms of the square footage after all or not. Um, I think I'm hearing things right in terms of us being able to, to do a vertical cultivation, which means to go up and stack. If I heard that right, I, um, that, that sounds pretty awesome. But I do just want to touch on the buildings because we are, we are coming across a couple of buildings that are neighbors to each other. Um, some were separate owners. And I think by us possibly acquiring both addresses, we would then meet the, uh, square footage requirement. So, um, if you guys are able to talk and possibly elaborate on that, we would sincerely appreciate it. I thank you all for your time and for any information you could get back to me and my team. Again, this is Rico Saldivar, Mainstream Medicinal, but potential cannabis business here for Madera. Thank you.
Elder, would you like to answer that question? Um, or should we bring it back to? I mean, on the, on the surface, it, it seems that if you take here the, the square footage, if you acquired both buildings, on the surface, it looks okay.
On the surface, it, it may look okay and, and I'll, I'm sure I'm going to need help from David, uh, who's been up in the trenches for, for the last two or three years on this. Uh, but, um, it, it, let me just back up a bit on the twenty thousand square feet. That, that is, uh, something that would require not just coming back next, at the next meeting with the resolution. Uh, reducing the, the square footage itself would require, uh, initiating a new ordinance. So that would be a much longer process to, to do that. So I wanted to get that out of the way. On the, as far as, uh, the, the, the square footage, I think, uh, Arnaldo may also help because of his land use experience. But if it's on the same parcel, there could probably be something that could be done. But if you have different addresses, uh, I'm really not sure. I don't think that that was the intent. Um, and, and I would have to, uh, look to Mr. McPherson or, or Arnaldo.
Arnaldo, you want me to respond?
Yes, please.
Yeah. So, you know, this is a policy decision on this, the contiguous, you know, if it meets the spirit intent of, of the author of that request. I think it's a policy discussion on it, but the challenge would be is if they don't own the property and, you know, they, they do it and then all of a sudden they lose the other property, now they only have half the cultivation, then what happens? But as far as being contiguous in buildings, there's ways to do that, but I think it's a policy decision regarding the spirit intent, in the intent to that. As I made the comment about the stacking, it was referring to stacking is taxable for the double things. It can increase the square footage of the cultivation, but I still think that's a policy clarification if that's going to be acceptable.
Okay. Did we have any more public comment? Um, I'll get to you in a second, Mr. Rodriguez and Councilmembers. Do we have any more comment?
Alicia? I do have the email, Mayor. I'll go ahead and, um, read the first one from Kirk Catanian. Hopefully today, the city council can move forward with approving the application for dispensary. Fresno was behind us and they have already handed out licenses where Madera is still trying to make an application. As always, I want social equity licenses to, to be four licenses to give local people a fair chance. Rule should be fifty-one percent ownership from a local resident who has lived in Madera over two years. Too many of these big companies are trying to squeeze their way in on local businesses who have and will support Madera. To open a dispensary cost is five hundred thousand dollars or more, so if they are to be approved, they should show where the money came from. If they say all from investors, we should have records of all the investors. It is too easy for drug dealers to use a front person and run things from behind the scenes. Fresno this week issued a soc- issued social equity to people, but somehow they all of a sudden got million dollars behind them as backing. City is being sued because they are choosing the wrong person for social equity and not researching them. This message is from, this next email is from Solomon Javade. As we are preparing to submit our applications for commercial cannabis, some concerns we have are that the applicants for the two licenses available under social equity should have a minimum of fifty-one percent ownership by a resident of Madera who has resided here for more, for a minimum of three years. Applicants for the six regular licenses that will be available should be awarded points on the application process for being residents of Madera. Currently, non-resident applicants with far deeper pockets have already been trying to push local small business entrepreneurs out. Thank you. This email is from Ariana Valdez. I follow the city council meetings regularly and was delighted to see the commercial cannabis ordinance pass. I believe that awarding local applicants points for residing in Madera is beneficial to our local economy and sense of community. I look forward to seeing our city thrive with the tax dollars generated from commercial cannabis. This email is from John Rodriguez. In regard to the cannabis social equity program, the person applying should have a minimum thirty percent ownership of the business and a true resident of Madera for five years. Local people applying should also get extra points in the application process. This email is from, it's, uh, says Penn only. If we are going to have commercial cannabis business operating within the system, it should be done by locals. Our money should stay local. Ownership should be fifty-one percent and they should be permanent residents from Madera for at least three years. This email is from the last name Penn. Happy to see we will have cannabis retail stores in the city. Important to let the local business people get a shot at running this type of business. They will put the money back into our local economy. They should get a bonus when they apply that isn't given to the outside of cit- outside of city applicants. Social equity program, many problems. How can someone with such low income afford to pay rent for a building which is currently at three times its value when cannabis is involved? Need to properly look into people applying and have a minimum for residents in the area and ownership. This message is from Akram Kastin. Honorable mayor, city council member, city manager and staff, I would like to respectfully bring up the issue of building viability and availability. To be completely frank, there isn't much to choose from. Madera has very few locations that fit the criteria or requirements for applications. On top of that, the prices for these locations has, have skyrocketed. There is a need to lower the building size requirement for vertical integration and for cultivation. The minimum should be lowered to ten thousand square feet. This would become more realistic and attainable for locals and small businesses. As for the number of social equity licenses, please allow four so that Maderans have a shot at obtaining licenses. The application process favors larger corporations who are heavily experienced in obtaining licenses. In the end, those who obtain licenses will do everything in their power to become as successful as possible in running these businesses and utilizing these licenses. Madera residents and business owners have so much to offer, but there are very few options offered to them in terms of this cannabis program. Please look into making this program more equitable for Maderans. And this was sent anonymously. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I've been closely following the county's decision to start allowing commercial cannabis in our beloved city. As a Madera native, I would love to see the council consider incentivizing local Maderans to become entrepreneurs. From what I've been seeing, locals have been getting forced away from considering investing in cannabis by outsiders with big budget investors. I'm confident that local business owners will consider contributing and donating back to our local economy. And that completes the public comment I have received, Mayor.
I believe, uh, Arnaldo said, did you have another telephone caller?
Um, it looks like, um, I believe it's Rico, um, and he has his hand up again.
Ma- ma- Mayor, I think the process is for, uh, three minutes for each person one time.
I'm, I'm sorry, I just, I just had one last question in regards to the building. If we were able to find a building that had enough, um, space, like let's say acreage, in terms of acreage, but the building itself uh, was small, we're able to, if we were permitted to build and expand on the property itself to meet the, uh, square footage specifications, is that something that we would be able to submit on the application process? That would be valid? That was just another concern and question that I had in, in, uh, regards to the square footage situation. And, and of course, I'm all for, um, you know, hoping that we'll be able to add two more equity licenses in case some reason we're not able to get the square footage thing, um, you know, figured out, then me and my team would also be wanting to apply for equity license instead.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
McPherson, did you want to handle that one?
Sure, Mayor. Um, again, I think it's a policy, but the expansion, as long as remember, part of that definition is that they have to open the non-retail components first before they can do the retail. So if he has, I mean, if he ends up delaying of, uh, building out that second building or, or facility in order to comply with the twenty thousand square feet, he needs to be aware that that's going to be a problem for him.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Jose, Rodriguez, council member?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, uh, again, I just want to make sure we're clear. I know that a lot of questions are coming around the, uh, the square footage, but you know, it's important to note that, that twenty thousand requires canopy of one of the non-retail. So therefore, you know, it's got to be in the area that's zoned for the non-retail. So I think it's, it's important to clear that. Uh, not sure if, if the question was around commercial space, but rather it has to be around the designated zoning areas, which are the, uh, industrial, light industrial. So I, I don't know if that's, if, if you can jump on that there, David, if I'm saying that correct or maybe not, but I'm assuming that the twenty thousand square feet is for canopy, manufacturing, distribution, which is non-retail. And that again is zoned in the light commercial, I'm sorry, light industrial and, uh, industrial. Uh, my other comments that I wanted to make is that we've put together and we've worked really hard in trying to bring this ordinance together and as of, uh, the June sixteen, we, we approved that, uh, again, allowing the six retail and the two social equity. Regardless of who comes to this community, I just want to let my colleagues know and the public know that we're already winners. Because based on some of the language that we've discussed in the past is that we're going to have employment of people that are going to, uh, fit some of that social equity component and, and having people locally, local labor and really, uh, uh, coming into these industries, which is a winner, which is something that Maderans have always requested, have asked for. And we're bringing that to the forefront. If, if you recall, the measure R really states that we're, we're bringing revenues to the city. It didn't really detail too much about how many licenses, how much square footage, but rather bringing reap revenue and bringing opportunity. And I think we're doing that now. We've, we've unanimously, unanimously decided that we want to go this route. I think in the first attempt, we were trying to go with a uh, hybrid. I don't want to bring that back, but I mean, that was the initial stage of this is to bring a hybrid lottery. Obviously that didn't work out, although we had unanimous direction. So we brought that back and we were able to work, uh, work this out to where we agreed upon the amount of licenses. We agreed upon the amount of social equity licenses. And I feel like if we continue this route, then I don't think we're going to give the bo- voters what we promised them. I do hear a lot of public comment. Um, it is a lot of special interest to be, to be truth, truthful here. And, but we would promise the voters was, was exactly what's on that measure R, to bring in revenues. And I think it's time that we, we take leadership and, and, and we, we take on this ordinance and, and we move this forward. I think we've, we've been through a long process. The people want to see this here. I'd like to see this here. The last thing I need is it to be handled up again and, and not move forward. I, I think we've worked really hard to bring this forward. So those are my comments. David, if, if I can just, uh, uh, have you confirm that the vertical integration would, would be within those zones? Based on the, uh, the ordinance?
I believe I need to defer that to the planners, Arnaldo, on that, on the zones.
Yes, Councilmember Rodriguez, the, the vertical integration is, would be in the industrial and in the light industrial zone districts in the city.
So I hope that might answer some questions in regards to buildings. You know, if somebody's out looking for a building and you're looking to vertically integrate, then you would, you would be, uh, you would look into those areas as specified in the ordinance.
All right, thank you. Um, is it Mr. Montes or Ms. Gallegos who want to speak? Ms. Gallegos?
It's me, Mayor. Thank you so much. Um, I just want to do a couple of points and keep it brief because we've been on this for a while. But we've been working on this since two thousand sixteen, which a lot of my colleagues here were not on council when it first came to us. Um, that's a long time. We're looking at five years. And here we're took, we're talking to change the amount of stores that we're looking to the four. And if we do change that, we need to think about enforcement. And that's something we don't want to do because then we're putting a lot of more pressure on our police department that is not needed. And so that's something we have to think about also. I would like to thank those comments that came through about, um, the changes in the twenty thousand square footage. And again, I'd like to chime in with Councilman Rodriguez that if we had gone hybrid, they would have had a a better chance of getting one of these permits. Um, I think very clearly that in, to change that would change the ordinance. And here as a councilwoman and as a resident of this city, we are stewards of every tax dollar that comes through. If we change this ordinance, we have, we're going to change and add more staff time, more money that's going to be, have to put out, more attorney time that's going to have to be put out. And we've been doing this for over a year. HDL signed, um, a contract for consults, consulting services for a year and we're still not done with this. Um, frankly, I can't believe, as elected said, we cannot be on board and move this forward tonight by giving the thumbs up. So right now, right here, I'm saying, let's move this forward. Staff's got direction. Let's bring it back and approve it and give the voters what they've asked. Bring in that revenue so that we can do some things to make our city a, a better place to live right now with those general dollars that we can say what we want to do with that. So if I could see thumbs up to move this forward, I would love to see that from every council member that where it's at. And if we need to make amendments, we make them later on, but let's go forward.
So, um, I'm gonna go ahead and respond to that. Um, first of all, the ordinance, uh, part has not been over a year. Uh, we put it on a ballot. It was passed in November. The new city council started discussing this, um, early this year, uh, putting the, together the ordinance, both myself and Councilmember Rodriguez. We're part of the ad hoc committee, uh, bringing this forward. Uh, I want to make sure that everyone in the room understands that this is a living document. It, it has never been, uh, passed unanimously because we're still working on details. And that working on details is what has got us to this point. Uh, but it's certainly not an end, uh, to this whole issue and this whole, uh, this whole process. Um, as it stands right now, I would vote against this measure if we did not reduce it to ten thousand square footage on vertical integration and add two more equity licenses to this. Because I don't think it's right and fair to the people of Madera to exclude them from being able to get into, um, into the cannabis businesses. Particularly since, uh, not everyone has deep pockets. Not everybody has the capacity to, to go all out. And there are certainly our companies that are coming into town. They're having conversations with the council members and our city manager. Um, and there are certainly a lot of companies that are, that are wanting to come in here. So we're gonna, we're gonna be inundated, uh, for sure by then. Um, I want to take it to Mr. Rodriguez, and then we have, I guess, a public comment.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You said it best. This is a living document. And again, you know, for the sake of the public, I think it's important that we move this forward. Let's get some data on how the social equity, how the retail, how the non-retail is gonna play out within a year. Bring it back, make amendments, adjustments based on the demand, whatnot, and, and make that a continued living document, not only for future council, but for any, for any businesses that are coming to Madera. I think it's important that we recognize that there's been a lot of work done. And us having to go back and forth would only, you know, we'd be losing revenues. And, and I think we'd be losing staff time, attorney time, and obviously that's a cost to the taxpayers. I think what we promised the taxpayers is to bring this, uh, uh, venture or bring this enter, these enterprises into our community to start seeing people get to work. That's, that's, that's the bottom line there, and I think when you look at that. And the other thing with social equity licenses, I think, you know, someone had spoke on the, on the issue with Fresno surrounding social equity. We certainly don't want to have invitation for litigation, and that's potential. Like, uh, I think Hilda had mentioned before is that you're never really free from litigation. But if you're starting to see Fresno struggle with that, then what makes you think we won't either? Let's, let's, we have something in front of us here that's practically ready to roll. And it really just takes leadership on our end to move this forward. You know, as I mentioned before, regardless of who comes into the city, we're, we're winners already. We're winners, and so are the people that are going to be working. So the people that are gonna apply for these social equity licenses. We don't have enough data to really assess how these are gonna play out. We've, we've given two licenses, and I think Fresno, for every seven retail, you have one social equity. We are, our ratio to the, uh, our, our social equity to the retail license ratio is, is much higher. I think we owe it to the people. We've already given that. Let's move this forward. Let's, let's quit the bickering. Small little things like that, like you said, it's a living document. We can always take this back and bring it back. We've heard comments, but the comments are coming from these special groups that are interested in building. It's not the public. The public gave us their confidence during the vote on the measure. That's what we need to take into account, Mr. Mayor, and all of you council members. That's what you need to take into account, is what the people, uh, voted for. They voted for measure R to allow this business. Let's bring in those revenues. I'm good moving this forward. Again, with the cleanup that you talked about, Hilda, for these, uh, application process, I'm ready to roll. I think that what we have right now in front of us is, is a good ordinance. And we have, uh, uh, already based on the last direction that we gave staff, I think we're good to go. So let's do this.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Um, I'm not sure who, uh, either Councilwoman Gallegos or Montes?
Yeah, so I guess I'm gonna agree with, uh, all my colleagues. This is, uh, or all the colleagues that have, uh, made a comment. This is a living document. I think that we do need to move forward. We've spent a lot of time, a lot of, uh, city resources on this, um, and all the current council what was here in January. And we did make those decisions and we did give direction, and it was unanimous. And then we go back and forth and say, well, I changed my mind, but we need to move forward. And yeah, you, you can, you have, you have the right to do that. But we also have an obligation to the community to move these things forward, like we said we were gonna do, and actually bring those opportunities to the community, start generating that revenue. Yeah, I want everybody to be successful. And that's again, you know, I don't want to be the dead horse, but that's why we wanted to do the hybrid model, because we thought that that was gonna be the best for all community members, is give them the best shot, especially local people. That didn't happen. We wanted to move it forward. But I think at this point, we just need to, we need to move forward. We need to say, okay, we're gonna do this. Yeah, we can have some review. We can, you know, we can, uh, have some of those policy discussions that David was talking about to make it easier for some of the people that have these questions on, okay, can we go vertical? Yeah, let's do that, to make it easier for them. Those are the same people that are asking us to reduce it. Now, if we can have these policy discussions and say, we're gonna make it so that you, you have an opportunity, I think we could move forward that way, rather than going back and, uh, make an amendment to the, to the ordinance, which again, Hilda outlined, it's not gonna be a quick, easy process. That's a lot more staff time, that's a lot more money, that's a lot more time where we're losing revenues. We don't have jobs coming in and helping our local residents. And that was the plan, that was what we promised to the community, and this is what we're gonna do. So I've already given my thumbs up to move forward. Last time we gave, everybody, I think, gave their thumbs up to move forward. There was a discussion on the things that we wanted to do. We, I think, at least some of the council members, did make a compromise and say, okay, in the sake of moving this forward, this is what we're gonna do. And I think at this point, we just need to move forward now. And those are my comments.
Thank you. Councilwoman Evans?
Yes, I understand what everyone is saying as far as what we did. Um, social equity, I'm okay with that. I would like to see the, um, vertical come down to at least 15,000 square feet, at least 15. But if not, then I'll go forward. But I just want everyone to know, I speak for myself. I don't need anyone else to speak for me. I don't need for anyone to say that I need to step up to the plate. I don't need to be acknowledged as being cowardly or, or I should stand forward. What I speak on is what I believe, and I don't need anyone to direct me. When I speak, I speak firm. I'm a strong black woman. And I don't need anybody to try to coward me down or to tell me what I need to do and what I don't need to do. I speak for what I believe, and this is what I believe. I'll give a thumbs up, but I do believe we need to come down as far as the vertical is concerned, and that's my stamp. So as far as us going back and forth, if that's what needs to happen, then that's what we'll do. Yes, I want to see the money to come to Madera, and we need this. We need this desperately. But I also know we need unity among this council, and right about now, I'm not seeing unity. So those are my words. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, Councilwoman Gallegos or Mr. Montes?
It's me, Mayor, thank you so much. Um, I agree with, uh, Councilwoman Evans that we do need unity, and I understand the 15,000 feet that she'd like to change. But I don't think our residents would be okay to know that we have spent a couple hundred thousand dollars, and we still have not moved this forward. And sure, the voters voted in November to have this happen, and we haven't had it for a year, quote, um, this ordinance, but we've been working on it for several years. So, um, it would be nice if we could adjust it, but again, a living document, we can go back and adjust. But right now, move it forward, get this moving, get people on board, get that coming, so thumbs up for me. Thank you.
Is there any other, oh, Mr. Rodriguez? Councilmember?
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, I just wanted to chime in. Uh, again, you know, I'm in unity with you, uh, Councilwoman Evans. I do want to see this move forward. Councilwoman, um, uh, Gallegos, um, I, I certainly want to see this move forward. Uh, this is a living document. Um, I appreciate all of your comments. But at this time, I think it's important that we move this forward. Um, I'm, I've said it once, I'll say it again. If we can make those clarifications and corrections on the applications for the non-retail, uh, for the social equity, and again, for the, uh, for the standard application as discussed earlier, then I'm prepared to move this forward. So I'm not sure if at this time, this is a workshop, but you're asking for direction. Um, I can make a motion, if that's okay, uh, uh, Mr. Mayor, to...
Uh, I'll, uh, we can do that after. I think we have one more public comment. Is that correct, Alicia?
That's correct. We have a caller, um, phone number ending 6262.
And, and Mayor, you might want to clarify, uh, and ask for public comments so that it's clear that when public comment has ended after this?
Yeah.
Thank you, Hilda.
Yeah, and, and I'm getting folks jumping in and out. Um, uh, when I open it up for public comment, some people want to chime in after. And so that's, I'm, I'm thinking that this is what this person wants to do.
Yeah, just verify for them that they've, they've spoken, they've spoken already, and, and you're going to allow, uh, any new public comment, uh, and after that, it's closed.
Okay. Caller, would you unmute yourself?
Yes, I'm unmuted.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Roman. I'm a business owner in Madera since 2010. And I've been overhearing the, uh, push to get this resolved today. I want to, uh, chime in on how important it is for us small business owners to have the opportunity to open up a cannabis business here in the city of Madera. Uh, I, uh, first of all, want to address, um, the council members there. I agree, I think we should push through a vote, uh, soon, so we could make sure that we're able to bring that money into the city of Madera. But unfortunately, with these big corporations that are coming in to chime in on the, uh, new gold rush, the new business gold rush that is going to be, of course, cannabis-based, where are they gonna take these millions of dollars that are gonna be established over a short period of time? They're gonna take this money back home. It might be in a different state, different county, it might be in a different country. And my thing here is to, uh, have the council members open their eyes and understand that we here in the city of Madera, small business owners in city of Madera, we are going to flood the streets of Madera, city of Madera, county of Madera with the revenue that we're making. We're not gonna take it back home to another city, state, or country. Uh, I want to, if we are going to be pushing for this ruling today, I would, uh, suggest meeting halfway and, uh, possibly giving three of the licenses away for, uh, uh, for the equity. Uh, and, and maybe change some ordinance, of course, with the income that's being, uh, brought per individual applying for this. Because, I mean, it is kind of, uh, i- it, it doesn't make sense with the, uh, small income that's coming in to open up these type of businesses. Of course, a business person would want to get involved here in the city of Madera. They're gonna make average about a hundred thousand dollars, so I think we also need to revisit that. But if we are going to push this through today, I think we need to meet halfway and also bring back that, uh, bring down that vertical licensing, at least to 12 to 1500 square feet, like, uh, Councilwoman Evans was mentioning. Uh, those are my comments, uh, today. If we are going to be pushing this, give us here, small business, uh, people in the city of Madera an opportunity to play also. We are going to keep this money here in the city of Madera. We will keep this money here in the city of Madera. We're going to run the streets and give back to the people that need any type of, type of sponsorships of, uh, uh, any, uh, support, uh, give back to the, the kids, uh, that play soccer, the kids that want to do any type of athletics here, that can't afford that because they don't have the funds to do that. We are going to give back to the city of Madera. So yes, if we are going to vote today, I would, um, ask for the council members to also understand we are asking for their votes. We want their votes. Will you vote for us here in the city of Madera to give us a opportunity, at least meet us halfway? We're asking for four equity licenses. If not, give us three. Let's make this vote happen today. And that's all I want to say. Thank you. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, I'm gonna close public comment. And I'll bring it back to, uh, Council for Action, if that's your preference. Mr. Rodriguez?
And it was, Mayor, and it would be, uh, the action is direction because the final documents will come back at the next meeting. But it will be helpful to hear that, and, and I would recommend, uh, uh, if Mr. Rodriguez, if you're making a motion, to maybe separate them and address the, uh, social equity, uh, issue first, and then we can get into, uh, what appears to be the second issue, and that is the, the 20,000 square footage. And I have some thoughts on that before you do.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to comment, um, you know, I think on the social equity application, as David had mentioned and sort of Arnoldo, is that, you know, we're making an effort in, in, in helping these businesses because they're not allowing them to have a property in mind yet because they understand that there is a, a big price with these properties that have gained value because of the demand for it. So I think on the application, it allows for these applicants to come back, uh, and, and after the, the, the review and the decision by the council for the retail, then you have properties that free up, that can certainly help the community and help these smaller businesses also acquire that, so that they're not paying big, big, big money, as, as was mentioned. You know, I, I, I understand the concern, I understand, uh, but we got to remember that there's a lot of folks that are gonna be employed through, through, just look, just think about the bigger picture and, and that, you know, you're gonna have a multiple eight licenses that could potentially be all active at once, and maybe three to four different non-retail licenses that can be out there at one time. And that's all employment coming into the city along with the revenue, revenues to help our community, uh, fund some of these projects that are out there. And I, I know that I have a list of them, and every council member here has a list of them. So what I'd like to do, going back to Hilda's, um, point, is that I'd like to bring, uh, action or direction, at least, to, to move forward on, on the number of, on the current ordinance that we have. And I'm not sure, Hilda, if you want to take one by one. Is it, are you requesting for the number of licenses, or are you requesting for, um, uh, direction for the, for the current applications as, as described earlier?
Well, I think the first part was had to do with a number, uh, of permits that the city, uh, council wants to authorize. And at this, uh, it has been six and two. And so a motion could be made to confirm that or to change that.
I wanted to make the motion to confirm the six and two and move this forward along with the, um, uh, the correction of those applications. That would be my motion, or, or direction.
There's a motion by, uh, Mr. Councilmember Rodriguez and a second by Councilwoman Gallegos. Alicia, do you need clarification on the motion?
Um, I'll take a roll call now, Mayor.
Okay.
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
I'll say only if we can change the two ordinances, and I mean, not one, but the two, as far as the, um, as far as the square footage and also on the social equity, and then I'll say yes, but otherwise, no.
That wasn't the motion.
So that's no, that would be considered a no?
Okay.
Mayor Protem Viegas?
Okay, yes.
Mayor Garcia?
No.
Motion passes with four yes votes and two no votes by Councilmember Evans and Mayor Garcia.
Thank you very much.
And, um, Mayor and Council, just some thoughts on the, on the, on the, cleaning up the language, on the, uh, draft of the criteria and guidelines. We heard a lot of comments. We're gonna go back and, and do some clarifying to, to all the, to all three applications. But concerning the 20,000, uh, square foot issue, um, the one option would be for you to today say, uh, we want to, we want to give you direction to change the ordinance. Another, another option would be for you to say, uh, we would like you to come back with, uh, uh, clarifying, uh, language in the guidelines regarding the 20,000 square foot canopy and, and include some language relating to the stacking that was referenced, include some language concerning, uh, contiguous, uh, buildings owned by the same, as long as all the other criteria, uh, and, and, and the like. I think that, uh, with Mr. McPherson and Mr. Rodriguez and I, we, we can come up with some clarifying language. Uh, and, and so that could be another motion. Some of you might say, no, we want it, we want, we don't want to vote for that, we want to change it, so... But those are your basic alternatives. One would be to, to just re, uh, direction to reduce it and bring back an ordinance in the future, which, uh, again, will be a bit longer and would delay the process for the vertical integration, uh, businesses. Or, uh, go ahead and authorize staff to, to make changes and clarify, clarifications in the procedures, uh, and bring that back when we bring back the, the three procedures.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I would then make a motion that we bring back, uh, uh, the, um, clarity on the, uh, vertical integration as far as the, uh, the, uh, square footage. So as you stated there, Hilda, uh, I'd like for that, uh, for us to bring that back. At this time, I don't think it would be, uh, prudent for us to change the, the amount of, but rather just clarify, um, and, and bring that back for, for future council.
And, and I would note that, that if we do, and if, uh, at that, at that time, council, the, the council could decide, we like it. We, with these tweaks and these adjustments, we'd rather not delay, we want to move forward with all these adjustments. Or a majority could say, uh, Or a majority could say uh it's still not satisfactory and we'll like an ordinance, but at least you're moving forward.
Well, the initial direction that I gave you was to do so, but you're asking for additional direction to clarify. Right? Is that what you're asking for, Hilda?
Concerning the twenty thousand square foot, yes.
Okay. So then that would be my motion again is just to clarify the the vertical integration within the twenty thousand square feet. That would be mine. Yes, thank you.
Motion by Councilmember Rodriguez, second by Councilwoman uh Caigos. Alicia, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Caigos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
No.
Mayor Protem Viegas?
Uh yes.
Mayor Garcia?
No.
Motion passes with four yes votes and two no votes. Councilmember Evans and Mayor Garcia voting no.
Alrighty, I think we have direction now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. uh Arnoldo?
No, Mayor, I can't no idea. Thank you.
All right. We will move on. My computer's back to the funny. Okay, we will now move on to consent calendar. Matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There are no, there will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, a member of the public or a member of the council may request an item be removed from the consent calendar and it will be considered separately. Did you have something on the consent consent calendar you want to discuss, Alicia?
I do, Mayor. I just have a quick um announcement or correction. For item B nine, um the staff report um states that the entry fee for the old timer state parade is seventy five dollars. That's inaccurate. The actual fee is a hundred dollars. So for the record, I just wanted to make that clear. The entry fee is a hundred rather than the seventy five.
Okay, thank you very much. Um I'll look for a motion from my colleagues. Uh Councilmember Rodriguez?
Uh yes, uh Mayor Garcia, I'd like to uh pull item B ten just for a clarification and a further discussion, please, if you don't mind.
Okay, B ten. Anyone else? So let's uh call the roll, Alicia.
Um I need to make a motion, Mayor Garcia. With that, I motion to approve the consent calendar with corrections on B nine for the fee of the parade and to pull B ten.
Second.
Okay. And do we have a second?
Yeah, second from Councilwoman Montes.
Montes to approve, um uh Councilwoman Caigos moved in to approve the consent calendar by and also removing B ten. Second by Councilmember Montes. Alicia, would you call roll?
Councilmember Caigos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Viegas?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously with six yes votes.
Thank you. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Garcia. This will be brief. So in looking at the letter of support, I noticed that the title of it is in regards to Farm Workforce Modernization Act of twenty twenty one, letter of support. Um but as you go down, you really did a really good job of explaining why and it's great that we want to make sure that they add these additional amendments to that act. Uh but we also have something in respects to the Dreamer, which I think is also important in itself. We just don't don't highlight the importance of it in the letter as much as we do the 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 main topic, which is the Workforce Modernization Act. So uh not sure if it's a question, but rather uh these two letters are addressed to both Senator uh Feinstein and Mr. Padilla. Uh I wasn't sure if uh it would serve best if we had two separate letters in support of of maybe the two separate acts because one, of course, being the uh work farm Workforce Modernization Act and the other one being the Dreamer Act of twenty twenty one. Uh but again, you know, I I just thought I'd bring that up because it doesn't really highlight the importance of of the second piece or the third piece that you're requesting, but rather just uh uh it's a footnote there. Um just, well, those are my comments. I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I thought it would serve us best to have a separate letter as well and emphasizing why.
Hilda, do you have?
Uh yes, uh while they're definitely related, uh and while the the Dreamers are referenced in the two letters of support, uh the the Dreamer Act is something different. So if uh Councilmember Rodriguez, you you want to uh consider that as well uh at the end of the agenda on placing uh other items on the agenda, you can request that a similar letter of support be put on the next agenda for the Dreamers Act. And today you just act on the this uh uh Farm Workforce Farm Workforce Modernization Act.
Great, thank you, Hilda. Appreciate that clarification. I I certainly will bring that.
Already, uh for the we will now
With that, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if uh we need to make a motion on that because we pulled it. So with that, I'll make a motion that we approve item B ten on the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion to um approve item B ten on the consent calendar. Motion by Mr. Rodriguez, second by Ms. Caigos. Alicia, would you call roll?
Councilmember Caigos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Viegas?
Oh, yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously with six yes votes.
Thank you very much. Boy, I got a frog in my throat. Uh we will now move on to public hearings. Item C one, allocation of the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty two thousand twenty one A R P A funds. I believe, Mr. Sanchez, you have this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Uh tonight I'd like to discuss in more detail about the American Rescue Plans and about the potential allocation of such funds. So with that, I'd like to um I'll share my screen. Okay, can you see my screen? Okay.
Yes, go ahead, roll.
So uh in the previous meeting in uh July twenty first, we had a dedicated workshop where we discuss in in detail about the American Rescue Plans, what is allowed, spent uh some of the restrictions. And we also, the staff asked the council for direction. The mayor asked for a list of projects. Um we communicated that the city would seek public input regarding the 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 rescue plan spending priorities. So the purpose of this meeting is to seek uh for public input, if if there's any, uh to communicate the impact of the uh American Rescue Plan um and the impact that it may have on uh rating increases and for the management team to provide options and recommendations that would be beneficial to the city and the community as a whole. And for city council to approve a resolution to accept the uh rescue plan funds uh from the federal government. So as previously indicated, uh there's some funding objectives from the um from the rules uh from uh the rescue plan that were outlined before. So here's some of the uh options where um things uh the funds can be spent on uh in the in different uh components that we previously discussed. And our focus uh tonight is going to be on the water water and sewer infrastructure and how we can spend the money there if uh uh council may choose to do so. So it, the sewer and water improvements, it would benefit the entire city, including the residents and commercial uses. It also mitigates the potential rate increases on pending rate study uh related to the proposition two eighteen that which is being uh prepared. So the decisions that are uh made tonight uh could impact the direction on on the rate study. So the funding for the sewer and and water improvements uh are um they come from utility rates. They also could come from grants, development impact fees. They could come from loans and bonds. Uh for your references, the day uh as of to uh at the end of uh twenty twenty, the city has outstanding debt of twenty one point one million for the sewer fund and nine point nine million for the water fund. As you can imagine, is um we're kind of top topped on the sewer fund in terms of debt. Uh so that's something to keep in mind uh if we wanted to increase the debt for the purpose of mitigating the rate increases. For your benefit, um within the next uh five year projections, we are projecting seventy four point three million dollars in total projects. Uh again, this is just for the next five years for water and sewer. Sixty five percent comes from water and twenty and thirty five percent from the sewer fund. Uh as you can see, seventy four million dollars is a very significant amount for capital projects. This is a breakdown of uh five year projections for uh various uh years that are coming up. You can see the breakdown on the sewer and on the water. The the biggest component is for the uh water tank that is projected for the twenty two and twenty three fiscal year. And uh just because you see less amounts on the sewer, it does not mean that there have been less projects, but rather we already spent a significant amount in the past on the treatment plant and the sewer fund, which is why you see the higher debt uh on the sewer fund. So how much can with the uh rescue plan qualify for the sewer and water? You can see that the total amount here is seventy four million dollars as I mentioned before. The total for the sewer is twenty six and the water for forty eight million. On the sewer, uh eighteen point seven million could qualify for the rescue plant and for the water, thirty two point eight million could qualify it. Obviously, we could not spend such money because uh the federal government has allocated twenty three million dollars uh from the rescue plant that we can spend up to twenty three million for those. But just to give you a point of reference that a lot of the projects could qualify for the rescue plan. So the sewer and water projects by priority. Um as you can see, the vast majority of the monies on sewer and water relate to critical infrastructure that is is needed. Uh you can see a smaller portion for future need. Uh a small portion for mandates and for preventive maintenance as well. So this is just a uh a list of, so you can visualize by priority on the sewer and and water. Again, the total of uh twenty four million dollars. Excuse me, uh seventy four million. So a different view is for the sewer and water projects is by category. So you can see that the biggest component is by major um O and M uh projects. Um and we also have the master plan recommendations and the new capital projects. We also have some planning studies and reports. So this is uh for maintenance and operations. So for the sewer priorities, um uh you you can see the projects. Um and this is something that the mayor requested. This is the main uh projects that we can see not, this is not the total, but rather the the main ones uh with highest priorities. You can see the Avenue Thirteen Sewer um trunk main rehab. Uh and it does not account for the three point five million in funding from the infrastructure bill. Uh we also have the identified pipelines. Um and if you have any specific questions, we can ask uh the uh engineers as well. So I I see that Alan is here. We also have the sewer lift station, uh the wastewater uh influence lift the station expansion and depreciation repairs for the sewer system for those fiscal years. And Alan, I don't know if you have any uh any comments on this uh list that you might want to clarify.
I I think you covered it pretty well, Roger. Um I can answer any specific questions, though.
Okay. For the water priorities, uh we do have um uh the leak repairs identified from the condition assessment study. The one year pipeline replacement recommended from the condition assessment, the year two pipeline replacement for the condition assessment. South Street uh of a one million gallon water uh storage tank, interior and exterior rehab. Uh we also have the new water well or water storage tank and pump station project for four million. So top priorities of eight million dollars. Again, this isn't all of them. I do have an extensive list if you would like to see that. But that's only if you if you request that um. So uh this uh next chart is not meant to uh this is not set in stone at all. This is just for informational purposes only. And what this uh chart represents is uh on the preliminary um um calculations, we can see that if we did not have the rescue plan and we did not have grants money, that the rate increases for the for the water would be significant. Uh again, this is preliminary estimates. Uh this is not at all what it's gonna be. Um but just uh to to give you an overview and the impact, this is gonna be a lot less once we take into account the American Rescue Plan if the council decides to utilize the money in this capacity. So this is a cumulative increase for the worst case scenario for for the water. So probably we can see. And for the sewer, uh it's even higher uh rate increases. So um as you can uh imagine, where the staff is recommending that you were seriously considered the American Rescue Plan to be utilized on the sewer and water so we can mitigate those increases and it would be significantly less uh if council would decide to to utilize. So to recommendations, we recommend that you conduct a public hearing, get some comments and also adopt the resolution to accept the American Rescue Funds and to authorize the city manager and finance director uh to allocate the uh rescue plan resources for qualified capital project studies. Uh only qualified projects uh that would be uh authorized by uh by the uh federal government. Uh if council agrees to direct um the rescue plan funds to be allocated towards the qualified sewer and water projects with the intent to mitigate the rate increases, which will benefits the entire community. So uh with that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to to answer.
I don't see any comment. But I do see some council members. So we'll start with them. Um I believe uh Councilwoman Caigos?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh Roger, great report. Uh I've done some research on it. I just had a couple of questions and it's probably for Alan. Uh we have raised our rawder rates in the last four years pretty high that residents have gotten hit pretty hard to build that uh water storage tank. So when Roger talked about using the rescue dollars for water, it's not including that water, that one water storage tanks that we talked about. It's the additional one that I did see on the screen, correct?
Both water tanks are actually um on the list for proposed rescue plan funding. Um the higher priority is uh rehab of the exterior and interior coatings of our existing one million gallon tank. Um then at the, I think it was item number five um in priority was funding for um either a new water source, which would be one or two new wells or the funding would go towards the um proposed water storage tank and pump station on the northeast side.
Perfect, thank you. Um I'm in agreement by using our our rescue dollar monies for the sewer and water capital improvement program projects because I can't imagine us raising our rates again. We did in the past before I got on council, nothing had been raised in water for over ten years. And the our residents got it hit hard. If we were to raise again to that point to cover what's needed that hasn't been raised again in over ten years, it's gonna be very difficult for people here in the it's going to be very difficult for people here in the city of Madera. So we are blessed that we have this money that came through. We thank our congressman and our state senators for, for coming together and giving this money to the cities that are, that is in need. And so I think our residents would be happy. It's not going to be the golden egg that you would say, but it's a, it's a big, pretty big piece that's going to help us through this neck of the woods to kind of see the light, because we are in dire need of some infrastructure in the city that's, that hasn't been touched for probably a decade or two. So thank you for seeing this, Roger, and seeing that this was something that is needed to come to council that was really important, because if we had not gotten your expertise and Arnoldo sitting there saying, wait a minute, this is going to have to be a big, pretty increase to cover some of these projects that are, that are having difficulties right now. And we don't need an emergency like the sinkhole on Howard and Schnorr, which cost us millions of dollars to repair, that if we didn't have some foresight to do that. So I'm, I'm, I am in favor of this. And I thank you for catching this and seeing this and doing the research and knowledge that was needed to make these decisions to give to us as council members to, to put that policy in place. Thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Garcia. Well, certainly there is no doubt that the water and sewer infrastructure is a high priority. And Roger, I just wanted to confirm to Councilwoman's point, by adding these funds, these federal rescue dollars to our water and sewer, do we see a decrease in rates or do we prevent from an increase in rates? And I wasn't clear on that, and I'm sorry. If, if you can bring back that, that table. And at the same time, maybe, maybe give us a, an idea of what the average rate payer would, would pay with this injection of dollars to the, both the funds.
Yes, Councilmember Rodriguez. So the staff is going to bring more information in, in the near future. In the next council meeting, we're going to introduce the, the rate study and some broad concepts. After that, most likely, we're going to do some comparisons on rate, on, on bills with how much citizens pay on, with compared to other communities and, and things. And we'll start looking into the potential increases. So this is, if you would please not take this to the bank, and I, hopefully I will not get into too much trouble here. But there's a, a possibility that there, there should not be an increase in water because of the grants. We're still analyzing the numbers and because of the rescue plan. But certainly, there cannot be a decrease on water because the projects are very significant. Now, on the sewer fund, because the reserves have been badly depleted over the years. I mean, we're, we're running low of the reserves on the sewer fund. And there's been significant spending and investments. And as you can see from the debt, significant debt, we're looking preliminary numbers that there would be modest increases on the sewer fund. But that's far different from the, from the potential increase if we did not have the rescue plan money. So again, this is preliminary numbers that we're looking into modest increases potentially for, for the, for the sewer fund. Now, I, I would like to highlight, though, the, on a different, slightly different topic, is on the solid waste, because the citizens see one bill and they can, they would see increases. Unfortunately, if you, if you recall, there was a presentation from, from the young people tonight about SB thirteen eighty-three. Unfortunately, there's no escape on the increases on the solid waste because of the mandates from the state. So we're looking into potentially between a thirty to forty percent increase on the solid waste side. And again, those are across the state preliminary numbers, and that's what we have so far. Councilmember Rodriguez, I hope that answers some of the questions.
Certainly, Roger. Thank you, and I appreciate your, your in-depth report. Obviously, letting us know where we're at with the water and sewer infrastructure. Obviously, we're just putting a dent in some of the debt that we have, but there's still some potential rate increase in the future. But at this point, I think that'll soften that blow. You know, I, I guess for me, it would be irrelevant to even consider looking at the broadband. And the reason why I bring that up is because there are a lot of unserved and underserved areas in our community. But again, I don't know what a project of that magnitude would, would cost the city. And that wasn't before us today, but maybe something in the future. I'm not sure if, if these funds will come back again next year. I think this is a one-time type of funds that we're going to take advantage of. But certainly, you know, there's a lot of need for the community and no doubt that the water and sewer is, is by far the priority. So again, Roger, I just wanted to thank you for your time and, and thank you for the presentation. Appreciate everything you do. Thank you.
I believe you can promote this. Did you have your hand raised?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Roger. Thank you for the presentation. And it's, I guess that's good news. I know you said, don't take it to the bank, but this is going to help us out a lot. And you said that there probably could be some modest increases. And you know, to Councilwoman Gallegos's point, we're, we're not increasing, and I'm not advocating for an increase. I just kind of want to explore some of the, or how we're funding these projects. Are we waiting for, with, with the rate increases? Are we waiting for the monies to accumulate and say, hey, you know, we're going to just hit this, essentially like building a war chest? Are we bonding out? How are we funding the future projects? Because it's twenty-three million dollars out of seventy-four. Well, that's a third, a little bit less. Right, so you still have two-thirds that aren't going to be covered. And I know Councilmember Rodriguez is wishing for this to come every year, but I don't, I really doubt that it would happen. I mean, it would be awesome, but so can you kind of expand on that, Roger? Is it, it's just, okay, we're going to increase rates and then as soon as we have enough money to pay, it's, you know, that would be another, what, fifty-one? Am I math right? Fifty-one million dollars in rate increases? That doesn't seem modest in my, you know, in my eyes. But so how would we, how would we address that moving forward?
Yes, so we have a combination of options. On the water fund, there's a very healthy reserve right now because of the past rate increases. In the past, those rate increases was with the intent to address those issues that you're talking about, including the water storage. So right off the bat, we have that cover in, to a large extent. The blessing of the rescue plan, but also some potential blessings from grants that are pending right now. The city manager and the engineers are working very diligently on hopefully securing some of those potential fundings as well. The, another thing that Keith and the city manager will bring in the near future will be the impact fees. And again, that's something that the council needs to consider. And part of our analysis is the potential for impact fees that are not there, but potentially need to be addressed as well. So if, if we don't want to potentially increase the impact fees, then somebody needs to pay for those capital projects and, 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 and that could lead into rate increases as well. So assuming that we take into account the impact fees and the grants and the rescue plan, it should be addressed for the most part. And all of that analysis has been taking place and it's still taking place with the engineers and with the consultants.
Yeah. I'm getting a, a sense of forward motion here. I'd like to open it up for public comment. I know, Elise, you have a couple of people waiting on public comment. Arnoldo, did you want to mention something?
Thank you, Mayor. I was simply going to ask Roger if he can clarify that, that, that even with the American Rescue Plan, some of these improvements, we may have to borrow money, correct, Roger? Or we may have to either get loans from direct lenders or we may have to go out to the bond market. Am I, am I correct in stating that, Roger?
Well, it could be, for example, if the council decides to, if the recommendation is to have rate increases on the sewer fund, as an example, and the council decides, well, and this is just an example, six percent is too steep for the public right now. Well, one way to, to address some of those issues is to borrow more money so that we can extend for future, you know, those payments. In essence, we, we, we could lower the rates a little bit by borrowing more. I mean, that could be an option, but the projects are, are many and, and they're hefty, as you can see. But, and then this is part of the analysis that we're, that we're considering right now. We're still hopeful and based on the current analysis, that if we do have the sewer increases, they would be modest.
Alicia, could you go ahead and have your public comments? I know you got some emails.
Mayor, we do have a caller on the line, phone number ending five, six, seven, one. Caller, if you would unmute yourself, please.
Yes, caller.
Good evening. This is Mayor Garcia, members of City Council. This is Baldwin Moore of the California Rural Ecosystems. I've listened to the comments that have been made and it seems like the council is intending on spending all the money on, on water infrastructure. What I'd like to do is touch on two other purposes that were identified in the act. The first one being public health. When I talk of public health, I'm referring to mental health. And, and so what, what I wanted to mention is that in, I guess in the past sixteen months, certainly the pandemic has wreaked havoc on a lot of families. Families faced with the threat and infection of COVID-19. So not only are they trying to keep their families healthy and safe, but additionally, they have faced income loss, for example. They face social isolation due to the state shutdown to, to the, and also to the school imposed remote learning. And so there's been this loss kind of like of, of social interaction. And many of the families don't recognize these kind of traumatic events. It's traumatic stresses that result, that impact what they can do, treatment that available and other help that they can seek. What I'm proposing is that there be a small carve-out that's a set aside to kind of fund a CBO to engage public health promoters, kind of like pro with daughters, that kind of reaches out to these families and begin to connect them with the services that are available and also to work with the youth in terms of, of connecting some of their enrichment activities that supports their schooling. That's the first one. The second one is something, you know, that this council has wrestled with for the past two years and has been really directing a lot of attention to. And, and, and that is the, kind of like the impending eviction avalanche that, that we see coming. And so up to this point, the, the state legislature passed a number of different laws that have kind of held things down. And, and then, you know, most recently, the CDC issued yet an extension of the order of stopping any kind of eviction due to COVID-related non-payment of rent. I took a look at the, the housing, it's key, and that's that state program that provides rental assistance. So in the case of city, not the city, but the county of Madera, there was eleven point two million dollars set aside for rental assistance from March until today, and, you know, in, in early August, only thirty-six applicants have been able to successfully tap that money. And that's been less than four percent of the eleven point two million that I'm talking about. And so what I'm pointing to is that many families who are unable to pay rent oftentimes is due to loss of income that may not be able to be tied directly to a COVID impact. And this is what we're going to see, that, that actually the majority of, of families that will be facing evictions will not have any help whatsoever. And so what I'm asking, once again, is, is, is for some money to be set aside, hopefully commensurate with, with the last awarded to CDBG allocations to both Coalition and, and to the Action Partnership, and I think it's about three hundred fifty thousand, for rental assistance that is non-COVID related. And you can look at that as, as, as purpose too, in terms of dealing with the negative economic impact. So rather than to look at it as, as rental assistance, it could look at, look at it as, look at landlords as small businesses. And this is like the repayment of small businesses in terms of the loss of, of rent that they, that they have to, that they've been, you know, been basically forced to forego because, because of these various laws that have been passed. So I'm asking two things. One is, yes.
I'm going, I'm going to have to cut you off.
Okay, I'm finished. I'm finished.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
More public comment, Alicia?
We have another caller on the line, Mayor. Phone number ending zero, one, eight, two.
Hello, caller.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Are you guys able to hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Monica De Orta. I work with the Madera Coalition. As you know, we are running a program that provides rental assistance to renters impacted by COVID. I agree with everything that Mr. Mois said, that we need a program that provides rental assistance to tenants that can't pay the rent because of financial hardship, not related to COVID-19. We get calls from families that need help with their rent, but don't qualify for our current program. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment, Alicia?
Yes, Mayor, I have a few emails. The first one is from Maria Alena Medina. "We know about the ARPA program and I work for a nonprofit organization here in Madera. I would request, request the support for low-income families impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. I assist many families every day with utility bills, but some of them didn't qualify because they don't have the positive proof of COVID. They were, excuse me, they were afraid to go to, to go and get tested and get isolated from their families at the hospital. So for that reason, they don't have positive proof of the COVID-19, even though they were sick with COVID-19 and are, and are in need of the rent and utility bills. Another need that I have seen in the community is the internet for low-income families. We are asking for free internet for these families. This will impact positively in our community."
This is from Lourdes Herrera. My name is Lourdes and I'm the Director of Madera Coalition, and I would like to express to you my opinion for the American Rescue Plan Act funds. First, we are a nonprofit and I have more than seventeen years working with the community. You know, we have a rural, rural area of most of people, their income from agriculture during all these years. I see many people try to survive. Now with the pandemic for COVID-19, all of these people were affected. They are behind in rent because they are, there are not enough, there's not enough work. They paid the rent, but they don't have money for utilities or for food. I would like, I would like it if you can consider supporting the people to help to pay rent or homeowners, their mortgages, the utility, especially the water bill. But no COVID-related, because they can have other issues and they do not have the qualification for the program we offer now. More low-income apartments for house, apartments or houses for rent. Support the homeless with a place to live, clinics to help them to take it out for addictions and offer a job or a lease volunteer work. Places they can stay more in summertime or winter. A training or education for them can be productive for our community. Free internet for the county or less for the city in this time the students need it. And the prices are expensive for the families.
Alicia, are the rest of the comments along the same lines?
Yes. I have two more.
Are, are they regarding this issue also of providing the monies for, for rental assistance and for?
That is correct, Mayor. For rent, for bills and rental assistance.
Okay, no, I get that. Is that it for comments?
That's it.
That is it. Councilmember Montes or Councilwoman Gallegos? Councilwoman Gallegos?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to chime in with Roger talking about the money that we have to use for sewer and water that we really that we really need to thank, take this moment to thank Congressman Costa for pushing through our three point two million dollars for that trunk line. I have to tell you, that has probably been on the books for over fifteen years, and that's why we haven't seen any growth go towards Avenue Twelve because of that. Most of these projects that he's talking about that need to be taken care of have been on our books for over fifteen years. And so that if we clean this up with the rescue dollars, we can look at future projects that have been on the books for maybe a few years. And what our predecessor should have done then is probably like Roger's suggesting, is that we borrow money to get these projects through. To comment on Baldwin and Monica's and the other comments, that they're saying that mental health money should be used for that or put money towards rental assistance for evictions. If we don't use this money towards water and sewer, and they're having difficulties paying their rent, their utility bill is going to be out of this, out of the roof if we don't use this money towards these projects. The pay payer is going to hit it hard, and how are they going to be able to afford this on top of a rent if they're already struggling? So this, in the long run, using all our dollars towards these two issues, sewer and water, will really truly help every individual in the city of Madera. So I'm for moving that, all that, those funds to those projects. Thank you.
Would you care to make a motion?
Oh, yes. I motion to approve C one as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve item C one by Councilwoman Gallegos, second by Councilmember Montes. Alicia, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Gallegos? Mayor?
Yes.
I think that city manager had a comment before, a clarification.
Okay.
Yeah, and thank you very much, America. Thank you, Hilda. The one thing that I would ask, Mayor, is the resolution on that's attached to the staff report on page four. At the tail end of number two on the resolution, I would simply propose that staff add clarifying language that's specific to sewer and water projects. The phrase sewer and water projects is currently not in the resolution. And just for, and and just in the spirit of clarity, that can that council clearly indicate or that the resolution clearly clearly indicate that it's for sewer and water projects. Thank you, Mayor.
So Hilda, do you want me to amend that?
Please.
So I approve to, I I motion to approve C one as presented with the accommodations to put it towards sewer and water.
Second, again.
And so motion made by Councilwoman Gallegos, second by Councilmember Montes. Alicia, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Viegas?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously with six yes votes.
Thank you very much. Thank you for wish for that report, Roger. Thank you. Next, we move on. We have no petitions. Let's go on to administrator reports. E one designation of a voting delegate and alternates for the League of California Cities twenty twenty-one annual conference. Does any of my colleagues wish to speak on this?
That that would be my report, Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
Thank you. The League's annual conference is scheduled in September, the twenty-second through the twenty-fourth, and that's in Sacramento. An important part of the annual conference is the annual business meeting that will be held on Friday, September twenty-fourth. At this meeting, CalCity's membership considers and acts on resolutions that establish CalCity policy. According to the League website, the resolutions that will, the resolutions will be posted on their website and distributed to city officials on Friday, August sixth, which is this Friday. The correspondence before you from the League is that council designate a voting delegate and up to two voting, two alternate voting delegates. Currently, the members that, the members of council that are registered to attend the conference are Mayor Garcia, Mayor Protem Viegas, Councilmembers Gallegos, Rodriguez, and Councilmember Evans. My staff report mentioned a resolution to be adopted, but rather Mayor or myself can sign affirming the information provided on the form as it reflects the action by council. So there's not a resolution, Mayor. We could simply sign off on the form affirming tonight's delegates, designated delegates.
Okay. Is anyone wishing to volunteer to be the voting delegate and two alternates? Mr. Viegas, Councilwoman Evans? Sir, third? Councilwoman Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Viegas, and I don't, I don't see a third hand.
No.
No, I see you, Mr. Viegas. I need one more.
Okay.
Anybody?
Are you looking just for direction or?
No.
Well, we need to designate.
Sorry, I'm I'm.
We need to, we need to designate Mr. Montes.
Can I nominate Councilwoman Gallegos?
Okay.
I'll second that.
I didn't hear the second.
I'll second that.
Okay. Is that is, is that is the voting delegate, Mr. Montes?
That would be the alternate?
Oh, for the alternate, okay. And Councilwoman Evans, would you like to be the voting delegate?
Sure, yes.
Okay, and then, Mr. Viegas, you will be the alternate, the second alternate.
All right, thank you.
All right. Are we good, Alicia?
Um, I have I have Councilmember Gallegos as a voting alternate and Councilmember Evans as a voting alternate. Is that correct?
I believe Mr. Montes designated Councilwoman Gallegos as an alternate. The other alternate is Mr. Viegas, and Councilwoman Evans is a voting delegate.
Okay, so voting delegate, we have Councilmember Evans. Voting delegate alternate would be Councilmember Gallegos, and the second voting delegate would be Councilmember Gallegos. I'm sorry, Viegas and then Gallegos. Thank you.
Correct. Do we need a motion?
Yes, please.
Could you call the roll, please?
We need a motion and a second?
Yeah, I guess. Man, I don't want to be done.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the. Nominate Councilwoman Evans as the voting delegate, Councilmember Viegas as the alternate, and then Councilmember Gallegos as the second alternate.
Second.
Uh, counsel, motion made by Councilmember Montes, second by Councilmember Rodriguez to assign the 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 voting delegate and the two alternates. Can we call roll, please?
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Viegas?
Uh, yes.
And Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously with six yes votes. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
We will now move on to item F, Councilmember Reports and Announcements and Future Agenda Items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for the mayor and city council members to make brief reports on boards, committees, and other public agencies and at public events, to request updates, initiate future agenda items, and to take action on matters initiated under this section of the agenda. Under this section, the council may take action only on items specifically agendas and which meet other requirements for action. Councilwoman Gallegos?
Um, I do have stuff to report, but our city manager had his hand up. I don't know if he wanted to comment before us.
Arnoto?
Yeah, if it would be appropriate, Mayor, can I just have a couple of minutes?
Sure.
I simply want to thank two staff members who are going to be leaving the organization in the next couple of days. We have our grants manager, Yvette Ida Hetha, who's who's going to be moving on to greener pastures, and we also have Reikers Sanchez, our our finance director, who's who's also going to be moving on on to greener pastures. Yvette's going to be moving on to the city of Vallejo, and Roger's going to be, he recently accepted a position with the city of Shafter. We're obviously extremely thankful for their service to our community. They have both been extremely, just, just, just great people to work with here at the city of Madera. Yvette's been with the city of Madera for about five years. Roger's been with the city for a little under two. And Yvette, as councils are aware, leads our our grant program and our transit program. And under her leadership, the the transit facility was developed, and she has has really brought the CDBG program along. We we've developed an excellent relationship with our HUD representatives, and the program itself has come a long way. And within, under Roger and the Finance Department, in his brief stint here with the city, Roger's developed two, two budgets that have both been positive budgets. He's completed the CAFR. He's transferred our utility billing system from the May system to Munis, which the city purchased a number of years ago, but 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 it was truly under Roger's expertise and guidance that he helped us get through that. So and so I simply just want to acknowledge and thank both Roger and Yvette for for just absolutely excellent service to the city of Madera, and I want to wish them well. And their two enormous losses to 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 both the organization and the community. So thank you, Mayor, and and Roger and Yvette. Thank you very much, and and good luck. Thank you.
Yvette, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, I want to thank the entire city council for the support that you've offered me over the last five years. It's been a wonderful ride, great career experience, but most importantly, on a personal note, it's been extremely rewarding to serve the residents of Madera. I've been greatly inspired by the richness of the community, the dedication, and the energy to continue to improve the community, so I will greatly miss it, and I hope to be in touch in the future, and I look forward to seeing the continued enhancements and seeing the community thrive in the future. So I'll be a friend in in the Bay Area and reach out to me with anything that you need. Thank you.
Thank you. Roger?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I certainly want to thank everyone. This has been one of the hardest decisions, mainly because I really enjoy working with the staff in the Finance Department and across the city. The staff in the finances, it's been, it's really special, and it's really tough to leave behind. And also, the the council has been very supportive throughout. And City Manager Rodriguez has been pleasant, very pleasant to work with. I just owe him a lot for many projects. Thank you, everyone, for the opportunity. I'm going to miss this place. It's a wonderful community. I enjoy working, especially with communities in the valley, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you, and on behalf of the city council, we thank you both for your service and we wish you good luck in your new endeavors. Okay, Councilwoman Gallegos?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. Again, big loss to our city, missing you two is going to be hard to be replaced. The first thing I'd like to share with my colleagues is I did sit in a meeting at the Lega City for Solid Ways, and we have a lot of things coming our way that you're going to see come across this dius. It's really important and unbelievable, and part of the one takeaway was that they were real surprised that California is the only one doing this. And of course, it's going to cost the taxpayer dollars a lot of money. The third thing is, we had a passing of a great icon here in the city of Madera, Dave Barry, who built most of the West Side and and came across to the East Side to put in nice developments for homeowners to do a little bit nicer to their homes because they saw new homes coming in. We have to thank him. He wasn't born and raised here, but he invested in our city, and he has given to this community up to fireworks, to money for Easter egg hunts, and I could go on and on with all the accolades that Dave Barry and his wife Patty have given to the city of Madera. So it's a great loss to us. He has a legacy he's put in place. His construction company will still be here in Madera, run by his grandchildren and his daughters. So with that, we will miss Dave Barry in the city of Madera. The last, I would just like to thank our employees to having the courage and the professionalism in showing up to work every day with what we have given us in this situation. So from the bottom of my heart, again, I appreciate everybody, the boots on the ground, coming to work in City Hall, in Public Works, in engineering, in, I'm going to forget somebody, in planning and in parks, and I could just keep going. Every employee, we couldn't do what we do without you because with you all out there doing what you're doing makes every resident here believe in what we have to be a beautiful place to live and raise their children. So thank you for coming every day. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First of all, I too would like to share my condolences to the Berry family. I know that he was a a big donor for this community and and a great developer as well. So moving on, I'd like to thank both Roger and Yvette for all their services. Again, I wish you the best on these new endeavors that you'll take. I know you will do great. So thank you again for the time that you gave us here. Greatly appreciated. And back to that original B ten item, again, I just want to make sure if this council would decide, then that we also would add a letter of support in more detail and emphasizing on the importance of some of these dreamers. I know that that letter referenced more of the the act that's before us. But again, referencing the dreamers is also something that this council has supported in the past. If we would do so again and emphasizing why it's important, I would certainly agree in support of that, but again, that would be the direction of this council. That being said, again, thank you all for your time. Thank you, staff. Continue to stay safe. And that's, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Montes? Councilmember Montes?
So I would also like to express my condolences to the Berry family. You know, you can't drive around town without seeing something that, you know, he built. So condolences to them. Roger, you know, you were here for a short time, but I think you were, you were pretty impactful. I did, I did a stint in the Finance Department, not, not while you were there. But I know that there are some challenges, and I do appreciate you taking the time to answer our questions. And, you know, we did have sit downs and, you know, explain things to us. I know sometimes it comes naturally to you and it comes easy to you, but having to explain it to a council member like myself, even though I've been in the Finance Department, I know it it must not have been easy. So thank you for your patience and your and your time. And also, Yvette, and you were here for a little bit longer. Actually, we actually did get to work together. And thank you for your service. Thank you for everything that you did for the community, all the grants that you brought, all the that you had a big impact on the community, you know. So wish nothing but the best for both of you. It is, you know, pretty sad to see that you guys leave, but, you know, you guys, again, going on to to greener pastures. So thank you, thank you for your time. Thank you for your service. And if you guys do need anything, you guys can always reach out to to me as well. So and then, and so this, this, I mean, these last couple of weeks have been a lot of stuff going on. One thing that, you know, before she left, Yvette did have at least a part in the Habitat for Humanity dedication to the Vargas family, and, you know, thank you for for doing that, and it was a pleasure taking part in that, and those are the types of things that, you know, Yvette was able to bring to the community. Also, other community members that have given back to the community. I want to thank Mainstream for their backpack giveaway on the first. It was a pretty big event. There was a lot of kids and people out there, and I think they ran out of backpacks within thirty, forty-five minutes of a four-hour event. So I would say successful. A little less, a little less known, it was an event on the same day. Thank you to the Hides Foundation. Yvette and Hida Cortez also did a backpack giveaway at McNelly Park on the same day. So I want to give a shout out to them and and thank them. And then finally, I do want to give a shout out to the Madera Boys. They are nine and oh in the twenty twenty-one John O'Bertie Bocce Ball Tournament. So hopefully you guys are successful and you can bring that trophy home to Madera. And those are my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Evans?
Yes, I'd also like to say thank you to the entire staff from the Fire Department, to the PD, to those that are in the City Hall, our awesome city managers, and also our city clerk and everyone else. Roger and Yvette, thank you so very much for what you've done. I haven't worked with you a lot, but the things that you have brought to the table, I truly appreciate. I appreciate Yvette with you with the Habitat for Humanities. That was a very nice event and such a blessing to that family, to the Vargas. That was a very nice event and such a blessing to that family, to the Vargas family. Also, I want to thank Ranch Market that did the food giveaway in District Four. I was unable to attend because I was ill. But they represented, they gave over, I think it was 3,000 boxes away for the residents of Madera, which is, which is awesome. Also, I would like to say thank you to Mainstream. I was unable to attend, but that was a very good project. The distribution of the backpacks is truly, truly needed. Also, I understand, and I haven't driven there yet because I'm just moving around pretty well. We have a new flashing stoplight at Adele and Lake Street. And I'd like to thank Keith, as well as our city manager and the people in Public Works for that as well. And to know that us here in the Meadows now, we have an operating gate, which we had protested and we were able to get this. And we have new management here that was instrumented by the residents coming together and voicing their opinions. So, there are a number of things that are going on here in the city of Madera. And I just want to say, Madera, we love you. I thank you, City Council, for being here. I thank you for the guidance that I do receive. And let's keep moving forward and just making Madera a better place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Viegas.
Yes, I just want to say thank you to everybody in Madera, the lead Madera to be a better community, especially with these two persons that are leaving Madera. We're going to miss you. Thank you for the great job you did in Madera. Thank you very much, and have a better future. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. I really don't have much that has not already been mentioned about some great events that we had in our community. So, I'm going to close out mine by saying thank you to you all. And Hilda, can you take us into closed session, please?
Yes, there are two items for closed session. One is conference with labor negotiators, Government Code Section 54957.6, agency-designated representative Arnoldo Rodriguez, Employee Organization Midmanagement Employee Group, and two conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation under Government Code Section 54956.9D for City of Madera versus High Speed Rail Authority.
Thank you, Reneal. We will now go into closed session. Thank you all for attending. Those that will be leaving us, have a pleasant evening. And we'll go into closed session now. And we'll go into closed session now. And we'll go into closed session now.
The City Council met in closed session. There is no report of election.
Thank you very much. Our next regular meeting is on September the first, 2021. I now call the adjournment to this.
Just to clarify, there will be a, a meeting on the eighteenth, right, Arnoldo?
Yes, yes, yes. There's going to be a special meeting on the eighteenth. I believe City Clerk Gonzalez had had reached out to council to confirm. And so, we initially attempted to cancel it, however, due to some slightly more pressing items, we think it would be appropriate to have a meeting on September the eighteenth. Thank you.
You mean August?
August eighteen.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you. I said September, August eighteen. Thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez.
So, our next regular meeting will be August eighteen.
Eighteen. And it'll be short.
Of 2021, so.
Pack, pack a lunch.
It is now nine thirty-four. Thank you very much for being here and say good night.
Thank you.